Lights now.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the planning board meeting. Notice that this meeting was given to the township clerk and posted on township bulletin board and township website calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start at 10:30 PM. I ask all of you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands well nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and liberty in all.
Thank you. I'd also like to welcome everybody who's on Zoom watching the meeting. The next regular planning board meeting will be held August 7th, 2024 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. The AMOLED roll call, please.
Mr. Albert?
Here.
Ms. Cardoza?
Present.
Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Morgan? Mr. Wilks?
Here.
Council President Rutherford?
Here.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Waino?
Thank you.
Chairman Bagel?
Here. Thank you.
Chairman?
Mr. Klein.
Can I hand him my certification that I listened to last night's meeting?
Yes. So this is a certification that Mr. Klein via Zoom was listening to last night's meeting and can participate in the meeting going forward. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in the township professionals, please?
Mr. S. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, housekeeping. So some people have been asking about public comments. The way the meeting works is the applicant presents their case and they have their professionals explaining parts of the application. Each time the public or the representative of groups of the public may come up and ask the questions of the person presenting that portion of the application. At the end of the entire meeting, when all is said and done, the public will have time to comment. The public can then, at their time, come up and say, I like this, I don't like this, I love it, it makes sense, this is how I feel about it. So we just want to keep things streamlined and within the reason of how things go. If anybody has a question, please raise your hand at the appropriate time and we'll be happy to answer it. The other thing is for the decorum, clapping, yelling, and everything else is nice. We appreciate that you are very, very interested in this application and all applications before the planning board. We'll expect you to keep that to a minimum as we keep the meeting going forward with the idea that the public and the planning board hears the information at hand and your comments and questions. So to that end, PB 24-01 West Essex Highlands Incorporated Block 179, Lot 32, IH1 Zone. One in a row, the applicant is proposing to develop a 496 unit inclusionary multifamily residential development on a vacant 120 property, acre property in the northwest corner of the township of West Orange. For the applicant, Mr. Plucker.
Good evening, Chairman Bagel.
Good evening.
Mr. Anderson, our engineer testified yesterday. We intend on calling our architect shortly, but there is a small portion of testimony that Mr. Anderson needs to revisit. There was some discussion and some questions about which version of the DEP stormwater regulations apply to this application. Mr. Anderson testified that the drainage portion of that application had been withdrawn. We confirmed that that actually was not the case and that the old regulations apply. And very briefly, Mr. Anderson is going to address that issue.
Thank you. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Anderson is still under oath as he testifies before the meeting. And at the end, you will be able to ask questions of him based on what he testifies to this evening. Mr. Anderson, you have the floor and the board has voir dired him. That means that we have listened to his bona fides. We have accepted him as an expert in the field and he now has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One more thing. If you can't hear in the back, please raise your hand. You don't have to jump up. I'm looking. We're all looking. We want everybody here. Thank you all very much and go right ahead, sir.
And I will try to speak up, do my part too. So when I was discussing the pulling of the DEP application, what we, what I need to clarify is we pulled the FHA individual permit portion of it, the wetlands permit and the stormwater analysis that goes along with it remained active. And therefore, we were grandfathered under the old stormwater standards. And that's how we got there. We have recently resubmitted the individual flood hazard permit and it's being reviewed along with the wetlands and stormwater plan.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
That's it? That's it. Okay. Okay. Council President, do you have any questions for Mr. Anderson on his recent testimony?
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Klein, do you have any questions?
Not on tonight, but am I allowed to ask a question about last night?
Yes.
So, Mr. Anderson, what's the diameter of the, I guess, the outside radius or the diameter of the roundabout circle inside and the cul-de-sac at the end of, what is it, building, the really long building, C or D? D.
I know what you're asking, Lee, but I don't know that I have that information right now. It's, I believe it's 100 feet.
Diameter?
Yeah.
That's greater than 80 RSIS for turning around?
Yeah. It's, I demonstrated last night the turning rays for a fire truck going through, all the way through in either direction and turning in the cul-de-sac at the end of Road D also.
Okay. That was it.
Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Anderson?
No questions, but thank you for the clarification on the DEP permit.
Vice Chairman Garino, do you have any questions?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Albert, do you have any questions?
I do have one holdover from yesterday, if that's all right. Assuming it is. On Building D, there's underground parking on Building D?
Yes, there is.
If it, if it appears necessary to do blasting for Building D specifically for the parking, who decides whether or not that's safe in terms of the stability of the slope? Is that the contractor? Is that the township? Is it DEP? Who would that be?
I think the, it's more of an architectural and contractor determination. The town's building department certainly would be looking at it. When the architect provides his testimony this evening, you'll probably see some cross-sections and you'll see that that building is set below grade considerably and it really, in my opinion, is not susceptible to sliding down towards Mayfair or any failure like the other building that was in town. But I think you'll have to see the exhibit to actually appreciate what I'm saying.
Sure. That makes sense. The concern that's in my head and, you know, as a layman, it could be from nowhere. It's just that blast, is it possible that blasting could just, before anything is built, that blasting could disturb the the rock and cause a future problem, change the condition of the site in a way that might not be detectable if all the soil studies and everything else have already been completed?
Well, the blasters do, obviously do it all the time and they do pre-blast surveys and other things to identify the existing conditions around the site and identify any potential problems such as that. It's their profession. They know all the real particulars of how to do it. And I know this applicant has had other projects where they've done blasting, so they have a good relationship with the people that do that type of work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Mr. Wilks?
No additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilks. Mr. Cardoza?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cardoza. Ms. Caffrey?
I have a holdover question as well. Regarding the porous pavement, can you describe how that will be maintained at like frequency and things like that? And then also who will be responsible for maintaining it?
It would be the applicant, whoever's the owner of the property is obligated to clean it periodically. Usually, we're thinking two to three times a year to get dust and debris off of it. Also, they need to measure the outlet structure after rainfalls periodically to see whether it drains within 72 hours. And it would all be outlined in detail in a maintenance plan for not only the porous pavement systems, but for all of the stormwater management systems.
Okay. And then one question about the stormwater regulations. So do you have something in writing from DEP that says, you know, that you're grandfathered?
The environmental attorney, I believe, has something. I don't have anything on my record, but there has been some emails back and forth that I've read myself that say that, yes, we're going to go under this new standard or the old standard is what still flies. Pardon me.
Okay. Is it appropriate to request that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we.
Yeah, can we?
Our attorney will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hess, you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One question. If blasting is determined to be necessary, would the applicant agree that they would have the contractor submit a blasting plan including a, their proposal for monitoring for vibrations and dust to ensure that they're not going to cause problems in the surrounding area?
Yes, I'm sure. Yes, they would.
And that could be submitted to the township, I guess, through the engineering department? And the building?
Yeah, engineering or building, whichever is appropriate.
Oh, is that a big condition?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a condition is that, sorry. Condition is that somebody will submit, what was it that you wanted, Ms. blasting plan or application plan? Okay.
Mayor McCartney?
So, Mr. Anderson, that raises another question. With the slope, will there be a study conducted by a qualified professional geotechnical engineer?
There has been geotechnical studies completed onsite and within, all through that Building D area that were both borings and test pits. So there is geotechnical information already available.
And do we have that information?
I don't believe so. I think that was an item that we had requested in our review letter, if I'm not mistaken.
The recent review letter?
I believe so.
Yeah, which we have not responded to, but we have no objection to submitting that.
Great. Thank you. Is that a condition?
Yes, we've got a condition.
Mr. Chair?
Council President Rutherford?
Thank you. Just a quick question. Why was the FHA permit pulled?
Why was it pulled? Because we were running out of time. There was comments that needed time to be designed. We had a 90-day clock on the application and you're allowed one 30-day extension, which we had granted. And the feedback was coming in slowly and didn't leave enough time to make adequate revisions.
How long ago was that?
I don't know. Several months ago.
Has it been resubmitted?
It was resubmitted approximately three weeks ago.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Afrin, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to note for the record that I had opened this issue up yesterday when I asked about the DEP permit being pulled as we had been advised through our expert that that had occurred. One of my client's board members received an email at 7:45 AM this morning from DEP. They're working hard, essentially confirming what Mr. Anderson has said. At this time, I'm taking no position. If we look into it and have any other questions, we'll raise them as we go further, but I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Afrin. Mr. Hazel, I bypassed you. I'm sorry.
I have no additional questions.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney?
Mr. Anderson, one more question talking about the blasting. When you talked about the detention basins, will that also require blast or could that potentially require blasting to put into detention basins? I'm asking if to install the detention basins, will that, could that potentially require blasting?
No, they should not require any blasting for the detention systems.
Thank you.
Do any, I'm sorry. Do any members of the public have any questions? Please stand up, come up to the front to the microphone, state your name and spell your last name, please.
My name is Jonathan Sharet, S-H-A-R-R-E-T. If I understood what you were saying earlier, you said that part of the DEP application was pulled and now is under new regulations. Is that correct?
No, it's just actually just the opposite. So we partially pulled the permit that we had. We pulled the FHA individual permit, but we left active the wetlands permit and the stormwater review associated with the project. And that does not have a calendar time limit. So now that we've made the resubmital of the individual permit, it goes back to the standard of what we had when we originally filed the application.
So everything is under, everything is grandfathered? Is that what you're saying?
Grandfathered to the old stormwater standard, correct.
Okay. In terms of the steep slope and the stability of that slope, are you qualified as an expert to testify to this planning board as to the stability of that slope and whether there's any risk of that slope failing?
Yeah, I've seen all the geotechnical reports and I know what the slope is and where it is and so forth. Yes.
I didn't ask if you've seen the geotechnical reports. I'm asking if you yourself have either an educational or other professional qualification that allows you to testify as to the stability of that slope?
Yes.
What is that qualification? Because I don't believe you were voir dired on that issue.
Could you say the last part again, please?
What is your qualification regarding steep slopes? Because I don't believe that when you were voir dired, you were voir dired on that particular issue.
Well, there's not a special certification. I'm a professional civil engineer, licensed since 1988. I've been practicing site engineering on flat sites, steep sites, working with soil conditions and with every project since 1988. So I have done this a few times.
Is there anybody else that will be testifying as to the stability of that slope on behalf of the applicant?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Ma'am, and then sir. Come right up, state your name and spell your last name, please, for the record.
Rebra Butensky, B-U-T-E-N-S-K-Y. I live on Rapley Court, West Orange. So I have a question regarding.
Ma'am, could you hold the mic up a little?
Question regarding the deer fencing. And similar to Mr. Sharet, what is your credentials in terms of expertise with the deer fencing?
Oh, deer fence is just like any other fence. It's just taller and it has openings in it that allows, you know, some animals to go through and keep larger ones out. It's really not a complicated topic. In terms of getting animals out of it and so forth, that is not my expertise, but installing.
I'm going with the environmental impact of modifying a forest by closing out approximately 30 acres on the west, 30 acres on the east of this 120 acres. On what basis is the deer fence even necessary? I know you gave me about, it gives the ability for the saplings to grow, but is that your area of expertise? Are you an environmental or ecologic expert? You did say yesterday.
Ma'am, ma'am, this was part, the deer fence was part of the settlement agreement. We had an environment, there was an environmentalist who did do their expert opinion and the expert opinion is on the record.
Into 2020.
That's correct.
And perhaps things have changed because it should probably be revisited by environmental experts.
Ma'am, last evening, the board engaged an environmentalist who will be an expert of the board and these will be one of the questions that will be revisited. So yes, it's going to be revisited. His expertise is not in deer fencing and it is also a part of the settlement agreement. So it is agreed on all the parties that it will be done. We will have our environmental expert look at it to see how it, if anything has changed. So you will come back at another meeting and hear more testimony.
Okay, and it was also stated by Mr. Anderson that the forest was deemed unhealthy.
There.
Is there any substantiation?
Yes.
Is that opinion or is that fact?
That's fact based on the original documentation supplied to the three parties and the court that created the final settlement agreement.
Correct. And what date was that?
2020.
That's right. And what date are we in now?
If we're checking dates, I have a calendar just like you do. So let me just say.
My point is just like the Hudson River had been polluted at one time, things change environmentally.
Ma'am, the board understands and we've hired an environmentalist last evening that will take this up and we will get an opinion from that person and their company.
Well, the question is, just because it was in the settlement that was done in March of 2020?
Ma'am, I'm going to try this one more time. We will get a new evaluation and see how it compares with the information provided in the 2020 settlement agreement. That's the goal of the board, to hear information based on expertise today and then compare them and see how anything has changed. Thank you. You're welcome.
Chairman Bagel, may I very briefly?
Yes, Mr. Plucker.
Okay, just in relation to that point, and I appreciate the chairman's recognizing the settlement agreement and I understand the member of the public's concern about the passage of time and we look forward to hearing what the environmental expert has to say. But the fact of the matter is what hasn't changed is that settlement, is that court approval and the implications and consequences that flow from that settlement agreement and court approval. And obviously, we would reserve all our legal rights in that regard. I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Absolutely, and the board understands. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as the objectors counsel, I'd just like to respond to that point legally. I've made the point yesterday and we still maintain this point. That settlement agreement is not legally binding on this board and the individuals here, including objectors, were not parties to it. And law is very clear that nothing is binding by way of a settlement on persons who are not parties to the settlement. And the settlement agreement is not binding legally on this board and this board cannot defer to it. So I just want to establish our position on this point since it's now been raised in detail.
The settlement, the settlement agreement said the board was not participant in the settlement agreement. However, having said that, there is a zone plan that was adopted by the board and placed into, and adopted by the town council and placed into the master plan. So the board is responsible for overseeing the IH1 zone plan. So we are responsible based in that fashion and we are responsible, as the settlement agreement says, the township and the board will work together with the applicant to move forward and the people of the township to hear the application. And we are doing that based on the Open Public Meetings Act.
No dispute as to that last point. We are certainly moving forward and we appreciate the time involved. I'm simply pointing out that we take the position, I just want to preserve it for the record, that that settlement agreement in itself is not binding, in our view, on the board or on other parties. To the extent it is part of a zone plan, that may be a different question. But there's been constant discussion that the settlement says this, the settlement says that. Our position legally is that that is not binding. We also have the position, and I should preserve it at this point. There was a 2004 set of settlement agreements between the developer and various private parties, including my client, We Care NJ Corp. That agreement contained representations by the developer that limited the use on the property to single-family homes of a certain number.
I'm going to object. That's an extreme mischaracterization of that agreement.
Well, that's a disagreement.
And this isn't a forum for legal disagreements.
Excuse me.
Let me, let me.
Stop there a second. The board is not participant nor is that settlement agreement before the board. So at this moment, we can't hear it, we can't evaluate it, my attorney hasn't listened to it. So we're here to hear the application. I understand you're making a record. You've said it. We don't want to hear anything about it because it is not part of this application.
Fully understood. I'm not even asking you to evaluate it, but I don't want to be in the position later of someone saying we never said there was an earlier settlement, therefore the 2020 is the only one that's cognizable in this whole set of cases. I just want to be clear that we preserve the position that that is binding and it's a legal matter for the courts, but I don't want to be seen as neglectful in not stating that position here.
Appreciate. I appreciate both sides. Ladies and gentlemen, the public, what's happened here is two attorneys are expressing their views of settlement agreements that the board is not participant in either side. The goal of the board is to hear the information on this application. That's it. All information flows to us. We did not participate in the settlement agreement. However, we understand there are many out there. The application before us is for a plan. We're going to evaluate the plan with the experts from the applicant and from our experts and come to a conclusion, including your public comments going forward, Mr. Plucker.
Yeah, just very briefly, irrespective of who's actually a party to the settlement agreement, because the settlement agreement, it addresses the settlement of Mount Laurel litigation and the settlement agreement and ordinance proposed an inclusionary development, there are certain state regulations which do apply to this board and I'm not going to go into detail now. You're a very capable counsel. But those are the types of regulations that say the municipal development application review process is pretty limited. You need to look to see if the proposed application complies with the court-approved zoning and in addition imposes an obligation to cooperate with the applicant, such as granting reasonable variances. So those regulations are very real and do exist regardless of whether the land use board was a party to the settlement agreement.
The court said, and I will just give my, and our counsel can weigh in on this, the court said that the township adopted a zone plan. The court didn't adopt a zone plan. It agreed that all parties will have this zone plan. We have reviewed it. The township council has adopted it. It is part of our master plan. So we are looking at this application as though it is part of our master plan, which it shall be, and that's the way we look at it going forward for the public. Mr. Afrin, you want to say something?
Yes, thank, thank, thank you. I just want to note our view that Mount Laurel issues, whatever may have been decided in a Mount Laurel fairness hearing, does not extend to this application. It does not govern this board. The Mount Laurel jurisdiction in a court is extremely limited to solely questions of fairness and affordable housing. It does not presume a project will be built. It only says if it's built, if it's approved, if it meets the law, then these 100 units could count towards the fair share goal. It does not mean it must be built. It does not direct this board and I would not like to have any misunderstanding because reference to Mount Laurel and regulations has just been made. We're now getting off the point, but I can't be silent each time the applicant's counsel suggests there's this outside set of regulations that govern us.
I would say that the board feels no pressure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Council President, one second, sir. Yes, sir.
So now I'm a little confused. I've heard both sides and we probably won't get an official answer tonight, but I would like our board attorney, Ms. McGovern, to weigh in. Doesn't have to be in real time right now, about whether or not we are as the planning board bound by this settlement agreement and further, there's some reference to an ordinance being included into the master plan. Is that the one from 2020? Is that what we're?
Yes, sir. It's the IH-1 inclusionary.
So I'll need the board attorney to also weigh in as to the propriety of relying on that given the questions about the timing of the filing of that particular ordinance. Unless I'm speaking about something different, it is my understanding that there was an ordinance that was properly passed by the town council in 2020 but was not properly filed with the county. And there was some, some information in our inboxes as council members regarding that. So if we're going to rely on, I need to understand from the attorney what we are relying on, what is proper and what we're not relying on.
So part of the requirements when you pass an ordinance is that an ordinance involving land use be filed with the county and that small, that part of it was not completed at the time that the ordinance was passed, but that defect was cured and the ordinance was filed on July 3rd of this year. It doesn't affect the actionable status of the ordinance. It took effect as soon as it was filed and the applicant's attorney re-noticed this hearing, which is why when we were originally scheduled in July, it was moved to these dates to allow everybody to receive notice that this ordinance is perfected and we are ready to go. The settlement agreement refers directly to the intent of the parties and there is language in the settlement agreement regarding the trees, because I think this is how this started, about the forest and about the fact that it was unhealthy. These are all almost like legislative intent as to why the town passed the ordinance that it did. And so you are all here to enforce this ordinance and you have this understanding based upon the settlement agreement as to why this was put together. And one of the very important reasons why the ordinance was passed is because you have an affordable housing obligation. And there was litigation regarding that. And this settlement took care of or settled the action by the owner who owned the property and wanted to develop it and, as I understand, wanted to develop it with even more units. And the town, who had an obligation with respect to affordable housing and had, I think even more units than what was originally agreed to and working with the fair share housing and the town and the owner of the property, the settlement was achieved. That's caught, that's put together in the settlement agreement and what was. And what was passed after or in conjunction with the settlement was the ordinance. What you all here as planning board members are listening to is whether they meet the status under that ordinance, and that's what we're here about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Yes, Orin Knights KNI GHTS.
Yes, sir.
I have a question I'd like to revisit, and it's imperative both for contractor and the township. And it's imperative because I think this is an issue and a subject that we must take seriously. That's concerning the bedrock of the area that we're talking about. I know the contractor said, oh, we do this all the time, and it's no big deal. But we're talking about an area that's on a slope and on a hill. And if I remember correctly, in 2021, we had a disaster here in Elizabeth. So the question that I have to ask you when it comes to blasting in that area, has there been a study regarding the bedrock of that area? And is DEP involved? Because for the sake of ill-gotten gain, we just don't want to rush through this and make it something that's trivial. So has there been a study concerning the bedrock of this area? Because that's on a high slope. We talk about these buildings, and I'm quite sure you have lots for, I believe it is, as close as to the hit to the corner. And I haven't gotten any specific answers to how it's going to be done, how it's going to be built. It just seems to be nuclear reactions or answers. So that's my question. And the bedrock, somebody explain to me what the bedrock is. And is there, has there been a study of that area concerning the bedrock? And what the bedrock really is, is when you start to blast, it's not only going to affect that area up there, but it's going to affect downhill. And houses. So that's my question.
Thank you. Thank you. Come right up.
Oh, they just, no answer?
Who's answering? I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson, can you answer?
I don't know if there was a question there, but I do know that we were just discussing.
Was, will there be an assessment?
Well, 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 let me finish my sentence, please. So we just spoke a moment ago about having, you know, the pre-blast survey and the conditions associated controlled by the municipal engineer and the building department, whoever is appropriate, and to do those studies at the time of construction, which is when those studies are typically done. We do have borings all over that hillside that indicate the depth to the bedrock. I don't recall the nature of the bedrock itself, whether they classified it as a specific rock type. But they do have an understanding of where it is, how deep it is. And I think with the safeguards that were just requested and indicated that it would be a condition of approval. You know, if this project moves forward, then, then I think you're safe in terms of having the safeguards that you need. So now.
And at what point are those assessments going to be made and who's responsible to do them? Are you hiring someone to do that?
I get your name first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you say your name and spell your last name, please?
Claire Benyo, B E N Y O.
Right, Claire, I'm the site engineer. I design the project site and not the contractor. There is a contractor and there'll be a blasting contractor associated with it that would take care of those type of things on site when they're going to construction, when they plan on blasting site, if it requires blasting. Then they would do their pre-blast surveys, they coordinate with the town engineering department, as we just agreed to. And it would be done at that time. It's not done as part of the approval process. It's part of the implementation of construction.
I was under the impression that there would be someone here this evening that could expand on the specifications of that plan.
That the, the project architect will have some exhibits which may clarify how these buildings sit in the hillside. So that you can physically see that it is not teetering at the top of the hill and would not likely fall down. You'll, you'll get a better feeling when you see his exhibits of the stability that is involved.
I was under the impression that that person was going to be here this evening. Last night, it was confirmed that the questions that we asked of this topic last night were pushed to this evening specifically because that person was going to be here to.
Which person?
The architect.
The architect is here.
He will be, will have an opportunity to hear.
Yes.
Never mind. Then I have a couple of other unrelated things. I mean, different things.
We're finishing up Mr. Anderson's testimony and questions.
Got it.
And then the architect will testify.
Excellent. So I just have just a couple of more questions, then back to my favorite topic, the environment. So to the chairman, I have a question. You mentioned two environmental specialists would be engaged. So that's going to be one by the township of West Orange and one by the applicant. Is that correct?
We have an environmental expert. I'm not sure what the applicant will put, everything, you can ask the applicant what they propose presenting.
I thought you had mentioned a few moments ago that there was going to be.
We have, the board has hired an environmental expert and will be evaluating the site.
Will the applicant hire an independent environmental specialist?
If and when we make that decision and they issue a report, we'll obviously put the report on file with the board.
And what conditions would be if and when that would be happening?
That's going to be up to my client's decision, and we don't have an answer for that today.
And what are the township's requirements for them to provide environmental reports by a specialist?
We're going to have our expert provide a report, and they can respond or they can adopt. And Mr. Plucker wants to say something.
You know, just with a little respect, I know that Mr. DeFeo issued an initial letter in connection with the application. We all look forward to seeing what he has to say now that the application is underway. I don't know if she's referring to an environmental impact statement, but the township site plan application requirements, it is not a checklist item. It is not addressed. It is not required.
That's right. It's not required by the applicant.
Okay, and so to the board, when will the, your hired environmental specialist be available for public hearing?
Okay, sometime during the process. We have to, we just hired him last night. He has to go out, evaluate the site. He's going to talk to us. So we want to do everything expeditiously, but we don't want to miss anything.
Excellent.
So we're going to have a complete, well-done study.
And you, since you hired them yesterday, what are their scopes of services? What specific reports or assessments will they be running?
The resolution that was passed last night was to hire Mr. DeFeo, who was instrumental in, in 2020 with reviewing the forest. He's here tonight. He will be here until he testifies. He may even be here after he testifies. I don't know that any subsequent report is going to be done because I think there was already something submitted, but he's here and will testify when the other witnesses that are completed before him are done.
And what assessments will he be conducting?
He'll, I think the health of the forest, the effect of the deer, deer fence. Trying to remember some of the things that we went through. A lot of the questions, the trees, the, the health of the forest, the trees, the number of trees, how they calculated, what trees are there, the progress of growth expected with the measures being taken, those kinds of things.
He's here during these meetings also to hear the questions of the public. So he will be able to answer things that come from the questions of the public, besides what we feel is necessary. As he is the expert, will provide more testimony.
Then I look forward to that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Avron Stoloff. I live in Verona.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, sir?
I just stated my name, Avron Stoloff.
Could you spell your last name, sir?
L O F F.
Thank you.
S is in Sam, T is in Tom. S is in Sam, T is in Tom, O L O F F.
The right answer.
Sure. So I live in Verona on the other side, not on the most recent side that was built in the mid to late eighties. That was called the Garden Homes, though. I did confirm with my friends. So I do know that, from living there, that the whole area is bedrock. So when, when Mr. Anderson was.
If, when, why, what, where, how, which, please ask a question.
I'm getting to the question.
You're testifying.
No, I'm getting to a question.
Getting to a question is testifying, as the law considers it testifying. I'm going to ask you to ask a question, please.
Uh, the question is, Mr. Anderson was talking about the water retain, water control. But since it's bedrock, most of the water issues happen underground. And taking away the trees does affect those underground water flows. So how, I'm curious how the plan addresses those underground water flows that will definitely be altered by the removal of so many trees.
Question. There you go. Thank you.
So the analysis is, studies the existing condition using the appropriate parameters to develop what the discharge, sorry.
Sir, friends, could you talk a little bit?
Yeah, I will. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I got, I backed up an inch. So we did the pre-development study that indicates what the stormwater discharge is from the site under the existing conditions under, with the requirements that the law requires in terms of it being a forest in good condition and so forth. And then we do borings or test pits throughout the site. We identify areas where it's deeper soil area, deeper to bedrock, and that there's no groundwater present, or there's groundwater at a deeper level. And then we design systems that retain the water. Some of it recharges back into the ground and back into this bedrock that is probably below, as you've indicated. And, and then some of that goes away in a way of groundwater recharge. The rest of it is controlled with an outlet structure that slowly releases the water out to its ultimate discharge, which is either, either one of the streams that are on site.
Okay, some of my time he took away from me having to restate, so, okay. There was something brought up also, Mr. Anderson said it seemed to reference that there was no data about the bedrock. And I want to point out, the thing with the garden homes, what I was going to say is that was built in the mid to late eighties, so there should be some data about the amount of, of.
Bedrock?
Of bedrock and what was involved, because my understanding it was, it was excessive in and caused quite a bit of, of destruction because in the process of building those homes. Okay, so I would suggest looking at that. My other question is, I, it's more actually for the planning board, if that's possible. Okay, so I attended the Latino Action Network's Legislative Conference in March. There, there was a housing expert, and I asked them specifically about having affordable housing and where the, where affordable housing should and shouldn't be built. And my understanding is, from talking to this person and reading up, is that this area is not a good location for affordable housing. Generally, you want affordable housing near, near downtown, public access, go forth.
You're testifying. I'm going to stop you. So there's, there is an agreement.
So my question is, I guess, why would you, why would you be focusing on an afford, a project like this with affordable housing when I'm sure there are many vacant areas that are more, that are closer to the downtown that would be better suited for affordable housing?
That's a good question. There's a settlement agreement, and the court adopted it with a special master specifically for affordable housing. That's it. Thank you. Okay. Sorry. Yes, sir. Could you state your name and spell your last name for the record, please, sir?
My name is Peter Tenkate, T E N K A T E.
I couldn't hear that. I'm sorry.
My name is Peter Tenkate, T E N K A T E. I am the, from Boswell Engineering. I'm the township engineer in Verona. The mayor and council had asked us to review the stormwater as it affects the residents of Verona. We have a report, which I understand the board does not accept by mail. So I'm here to present the report formally for the record.
You could pass that out. The board hasn't had a chance to read.
I understand.
Are you going to make yourself available for questions with respect to the report? Or would you like to pass it out and then give a summary to the board of the salient points within it?
Yes, it's very technical in nature. I could come back to another meeting to go over after everybody's had the chance to review it.
All right. So my suggestion is if you give the exhibits to our court secretary, we'll pass them out. If you will identify it as an exhibit, we'll do, we'll call it as. Did you, you're the one who prepared this report? You're familiar with it?
I am not the one who prepared it.
But you're familiar with it?
Yes.
And from your company, and you've, you have the expertise to discuss this, correct?
I prefer if the person who prepared it did it, but I can discuss it. It's very technical in nature and has to deal with the regulations.
Do you have the expertise to give us a summary of what's in that report?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Hess, we did, I did send that to you earlier because I did have a copy. It would be my suggestion that, that you give a brief summary, and the board won't be in a position really to ask any substantive questions, nor do I think that the applicant's attorney would be prepared. So that we'll take it at this point and ask for you to come back, or the author of the report to come back. But you've, you've you've identified it as a reliable instrument. I'm going to have to say that, that it is something that it's, it could have some bearing on the board's decision. So if you could just give a brief summary of what we are accepting right now, and the board will take a look at it, but we'll delve into testimony at a later date when someone from your office can respond to it. Okay?
Okay. What are you labeling this?
We're going to label it as O1 because it's object, it's an objector exhibit.
Is Mr. Anderson still being questioned? I know we're kind of, it's kind of a little out of order.
Mr. Anderson, we haven't finished him. I think there might be someone behind.
Okay, great.
You took the opportunity to get on the line and do this, and I get it. So it's sort of in the same subject matter because it's an engineer.
I would prefer if we could defer this to the next meeting to have the author present.
Do you have any objection to that?
Objection.
All right, Mr. Hess, then our board engineer will be also able to review that. And if you could give a copy of your report, thank you. We'll ask you to come back. So the board members, you can take a look at this. And we'll, once we get somebody back here to ask questions about it, that's when we'll delve into it in more detail.
Okay. When is the next meeting?
So that's a good question. Are we getting to that already?
No. We'll, we'll, we'll discuss it with the applicant if we don't finish tonight, and we'll publish that later in April.
Thank you.
And it will be on the website.
Thank you.
Feel free, you can contact, contact the board offices. They can put you in touch with me, or you, I think. If you don't have my email, you may. I'm that guy, Shon Kamako. You should be able to find me. Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could offer one comment.
Mr. Hess.
Thank you. The, I'd like to let Mr. Tenkate know that the plans and the report that you referenced in the letter are not the latest. My suggestion would be that you contact the board secretary and get a copy of the latest plans because there have been changes, and some of the items you're indicating don't accurately reflect what's proposed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, just for public information and those on Zoom. This has been supplied to the board, to the applicant, and to our professionals. Only when and if their expert or the maker of this report testifies will it then be available to the public. If the maker of this or the representative doesn't testify, this will not be available to the public, and the board will hold it with no weight. Okay, in fairness to the applicant. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Krakowiak.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Joe Krakowiak, last name K R A K O V I A K. I have two three-part questions for Mr. Anderson. The first one has to do with his entire career, and I know it's been lengthy, so I just ask as precisely as you can estimate. How many times during your career have you been the primary for evaluating a site for the potential for landslides? The second question is, of all of those, how many times did you recommend for the security of the site and that there wouldn't be a landslide? And the third part of the question is, was there ever any instances where you approved a site where it turned out that there was a landslide?
Okay, so I have not worked with any projects that are landslides. But what you're, what we do every day is we ensure. is we ensure site stability of the of soil conditions by providing appropriate grading. Uh, looking at existing soil conditions and things that might create soil instability. There has been no uh, soil failures on any of the projects that I've worked on over my career. Okay, just one part. What part did I miss?
No, no, that 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 was uh, that was sufficient. Uh, you didn't by chance work on the project here in West Orange uh, several years ago for the Seton Hall Prep Athletic Fields?
No, I did not.
Okay. Uh, for this specific project, did you evaluate with a potential for landslide in mind? If so, what was your process of evaluation and what was your conclusion and your rationale?
I don't look at it in terms of landslide. Again, I look at it in terms of soil stability. So when we're looking at something that might cause instability of that building on the slope, which has been become a concern, I look at what the building is founded on based on the geotechnical studies that have been done in the area. And in terms of what I see is uh, bedrock down approximately seven to 11 feet into the ground. So that the building would be founded on bedrock, probably pinned to bedrock entirely over its entire foundation. And it would not be on soil that would be unstable. It would be on solid bedrock. So um, if you if I was to be asked whether I think that's a stable situation, poured concrete foundations pinned into bedrock on all the way through. I think it's probably one of the most stable circumstances you could get uh, from an engineering basis.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening. Good evening, Patrick Leterza, L A T E R Z A. I have a really quick question because I couldn't hear earlier. Um, the flood hazard permit with the D E P was pulled. Are you able to confirm? I couldn't hear what you said, that it was pulled maybe around November of twenty twenty-three?
I I didn't give a date.
Oh, okay.
But that that's it's probably correct. I mean, I'd have to go back and look at my records to see the exact date that it was pulled.
Okay, so like eight months ago.
What?
So about eight, eight, nine months ago, somewhere around there?
Yeah, it was. Yes.
Okay, right. Thank you. That's my question.
Thank you.
Hi, Rick. Kumarpitel, P A T E L, last name, uh, Kumarp, K U M A R. Uh, good question. So how many projects or your career have you worked where stability could be an issue?
Where could you say that last part again, please?
You mentioned earlier the landslides, right? That you look at the landslides piece from a soil stability standpoint. So over your career from nineteen eighty-eight or whatever you mentioned when you were certified, over your career's duration, how many projects have you worked on where this could have been a potential issue? Similar to um, the site that's under question right now.
I I don't know what the number is, but there's uh, quite a few steeper lots that are being developed throughout New Jersey that I've worked on over the years. And uh, it comes up in just virtually every municipality in North Jersey. There's steep areas that we work on.
And uh, has there ever been any um, issue of stability of the building or structure?
No, there is not.
That you're aware of. Okay, thank you. Uh, one question for the board. Um, you um, board mentioned that um, there was a consultant hired, right? Last evening for doing the survey of the forest again. And if I understood correctly from the comments, it was the same consultant who provided the report previously. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, is uh, there any rationale for hiring the same consultant compared to any other third parties uh, out there available in New Jersey?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there any answer that board would be providing or rationale?
Yes, uh, he has great credentials. He teaches environmental science and he knows the area. Uh, as was brought out by many people, what has changed between twenty twenty and today? He would be the best person and his group would be the best people to give a most accurate understanding of where it was and where it is today. So as opposed to trying to reinvent the wheel, we have somebody who is well-known in the field, uh, an expert and knows the site.
Okay. And uh, the credentials will be shared by the board?
Absolutely. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Anderson about his testimony? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Right, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Pulled a rug right out from London.
Uh, my name's Sejal Javeri. Okay, let me help you out with this. S E J A L. The last name is J H A V E R I hyphenation G A J A R A W A L A. So my question is, if this worked, sorry, if my question is, if this were to move forward, Mr. Anderson, would your applicant or maybe it's um, sorry, to Mr. Parker, would the developer be willing to put in an escrow fund for anybody who may be impacted by the blasting?
Uh, I I think that's going to be a condition that we have to hear all the testimony. And then there may be a condition that may not based on testimony of all the experts. It's a good question. Stay with us and come back, please.
We'll stay. Thank you.
Do any other member of the public have any questions for Mr. Anderson? Seeing none. Thank you. Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant calls our architect Larry Appel.
You state your name and spell your last name for the record, sir.
Um, my name is Lawrence, L A U R A N C E, Appel, A P P E L. Lawrence Appel, A P P E L, and that's L A U R A N C E.
I swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Appel, could you please offer your qualifications to the board?
Sure. Um, I am a principal of Appel Design Group Architects. I hold a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering and a master's in architecture. I'm licensed in New Jersey since nineteen ninety-two, also New York, Pennsylvania. I'm N-CARB certified. I've appeared before many local boards, including West Orange, um, um, not the planning board, but the zoning board several times. Livingston, Florham Park, Milburn, Maplewood, South Orange, um, most of the municipalities in the area. Um, and I'm here just as an expert in architecture.
Sir, is your license in New Jersey uh, in force?
Yes.
Okay, did you do the did you do the architecture for this site or is your name on the plans?
Yes.
Okay. Do any members of the board have any questions? Seeing none, we accept Mr. Appel as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey who drew the plans for this site.
Okay. Great, thank you. So um, one of the one of the questions first is that I have um, some exhibits here. Do I need to start tagging them or or reference them?
Board with the record?
Yes, well, um, no.
I'm just going to consult with Mr. Appel to determine what is from the board.
So ladies and gentlemen, what's happening is some housekeeping for those here and those on Zoom. Uh, anything that's not presented to the board in our packets has to be identified for us and the public. So the applicant's attorney and the architect are talking.
I I guess the question is, what was that part of your packet and was it posted as part of the agenda documents?
I think you already submitted this PowerPoint to um, we'll mark the PowerPoint as A one. So that we'd have it, even though it might be duplicative of what the board has in terms of their
Is there already A one? You haven't marked any? No, no. No, I I think it's fair to say that these were demonstrative exhibits uh, that were provided to Mr. Fagan so he could uh, digitally display it for everybody in the room. So perhaps actually we should mark Mr. Anderson's PowerPoint presentation as A one.
Last night's PowerPoint is A one and tonight's PowerPoint will be A two.
Powerpoint last night will be A one. PowerPoint tonight will be A two. And we have
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can we just make it a given standing request that uh, when possible, Mr. Plaka will forward these PDFs to me as well because we don't have a copy.
Do you have any objections about that?
That's not a problem. And just for the record, I did not know uh, Bush's involvement until after we submitted these to the board.
Oh, no criticism intended. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll start with uh, and am I talking loud enough because I I know that this I'm trying to speak a little bit louder than normal. Can everyone hear all right?
Is this okay now? Okay.
So uh, Mr. Anderson provided a thorough presentation regarding the site. The project was designed in accordance with the I H dash one zone as well as the settlement agreement. We worked diligently with the project team and other professionals to create an exciting architecture um, for the buildings. Um, this is um, one of the rendering reviews that we have prepared. I will just keep this up. It's a little nicer than seeing the uh, the splash screen, you know, with my name on it. So uh, we worked diligently with the project team and other professionals to create an exciting architecture for the buildings. This is a luxury community providing a balanced lifestyle um, with integration of both market and affordable homes in a pristine wooded site. The team was able to retain large portions of the wooded site um, and um, uh, which surround the buildings and the surrounding neighborhoods. The project includes well-thought-out vehicular circulation as um, parking as well as pedestrian circulation around the site and in particular between the buildings. There are, um, as Mr. Anderson explained, there are four building clusters, A, B, C, and D. Four hundred and ninety-six rental units proposed with twenty percent um, affordable component. Um, this um, also contemplates onsite superintendents as well. Buildings A and D are separated into small, two smaller buildings, um, which create smaller volumes. So when you saw that larger building, um, both the um, A and D buildings were broken up into two smaller buildings um, while maintaining a compact design as well. So the affordable units are all integrated in each building. And all the units um, are described in a unit distribution matrix, which is on the cover page of the drawing that all of you were uh, circulated. That's on drawing C dash zero one. Um, one of the things to mention in here when we're looking at units is we have a lot of diversity in the types of units in a building like this. And we've done that because we've taken the corridor, the internal corridor on each floor and offset it slightly. So you have basically a deeper side and a shallower side. And we we believe that this gives more opportunity, um, opportunity to be responsive to residents. So the typical unit configurations are shown on drawing PB dash four point seven. And I'm not going to go pull that up and walk through the design in there because I wanted to keep in mind while the overall building and massing is set with the design. Um, the way the interior units are configured sometimes shift slightly um, um, a couple of inches one way or another way to um, take advantage of structural issues, um, structural concerns and architectural development following the approvals. And this is because we bring drawings um, for an architectural submission to the planning board to a schematic um, uh, completion as opposed to the site design is brought to um, full completion. So we have a lot of work still to do in here, but this is an accurate depiction of what we're proposing. But there's a little bit of some of the internal workings of the building that will uh, develop over time. Now, all of the buildings share a similar design motif. They use similar palette of materials that's shown here on the rendering. Um, one of the things that's a little different is building D. It incorporates additional amenity spaces as well as a rooftop outdoor amenity deck as well. Building D also incorporates higher interior ceilings. We have made that building ten-foot floor to floor, um, um, uh, ceiling height as opposed to nine feet. And all the of the buildings are conforming with the height provisions in the ordinance. So parking, this was discussed a little bit on the prior testimony, and I'm sure you'll have um, more about this in um, uh, when the traffic consultant comes up as well. So the the project was designed with a mix of surface spaces, surface stalls, as well as covered spaces, internal garage spaces under the building, as Mr. Anderson explained. All of these were designed to meet RSIS and in fact exceed the ratios that are um, provided and enumerated in RSIS. So typically below the buildings, the spaces are assigned. One of the questions raised by the board professionals was with regard to tandem stalls. We have used tandem stalls on numerous buildings. They're efficient. They work very well, but there's a caveat. They need to be assigned to a single residential unit. And it's no different than having a townhouse with a garage. And if my wife was parked in the garage and I was parked in the driveway, I've got to move my car out, let her pull her car out and all is fine. It's the same thing with a tandem stall in a common garage. So all of the surface parking will not be assigned and um, so all of the surface spaces will be available for both residents as well as guests. We comply with the half a stall per unit, which is a requirement of RSIS. Now, another small caveat in here is building D, as Mr. Anderson explained, um, has mostly um, internal um, garage parking, not surface stalls. So we had to make a portion of those garages not secured. In other words, that they would not um, be able to have a gate on the outside opening to the garage. That gate would be put internal to allow the requisite number of stalls to meet the RSIS provisions. So um, another um, item that was questioned was with regard to EV stalls, electric vehicle. Um, they're provided per the ordinance and applicable state laws. Uh, Mr. Anderson placed um, at each building um, one handicap and one standard surface stall that would be EV. This is something that we coordinated with, but it was not fully updated on our architectural submission. So the balance of the stalls for EV compliance are going to be placed inside the garages. And um, while we show some of these locations, I would represent that the overall number will be met, but the location may vary because we don't know exactly where the utility company is going to allow us to put our transformer and bring power in. So we like to keep all of these things clustered close to our electrical distribution for efficiency. So this ordinance requires that there be five percent of the overall parking stalls to um, be for EV charging and additionally provisions for make-ready stalls for another five percent and five percent uh, phased in the future. We will comply with all of the requirements in here. And um, as I indicated, Mr. Anderson is showing his stalls um, on the revised site plan. The balance of the EV stalls are proposed to be um, internal to the buildings. So um, in doing everything that we're doing, we're actually permitted to take a ten percent credit on our parking. But I I understand Mr. Anderson has not taken that credit. So that even adds a little bit to the um, the potential additional stalls that um, are available. So that even adds a little bit to the, um, the potential additional stalls that, um, are available. And, uh, the other thing that I would mention is with, um, the, these EV stalls. What we like to do is plan for the future. We're not going to put in extra, uh, chargers, but we want to make sure that the building has adequate power and distribution to permit all of this. So we will provide the infrastructure for the future growth in here just because it makes good sense and it's appropriate for planning. But, um, we don't necessarily want to put them in, especially because what was cutting edge today will be antiquated a year from now. It's, uh, everything moving very quickly. So some of the questions that were raised, um, in here were with regard to, um, questions of life safety. Um, this building is fully sprinklered. There are requirements, um, under NFPA for all of the sprinkler systems in here. This building will be fully sprinklered. Um, in addition, um, one thing to note is, um, all of the um, building from the podium and the podium is that garage level of the building, that lower level of the building where you often will have a lobby and a garage. Um, it's called podium construction. It's three hour fire rated. Um, that's extraordinary. And, um, in addition, all of the upper floors are one hour fire rated. Um, there will be stand pipes in each building. You'll have a fully monitored alarm system. That means when the alarm system goes off, it's not a local alarm. It goes right to the fire department or to the monitoring station. We will be providing emergency generators at each building to provide at a minimum right now, um, access controls, security lighting, um, uh, controls for the garage getting in and out. So no one would be stranded in case there's a power failure. Um, we have not made a decision of whether the, uh, emergency lighting will be on batteries or the generator. That's a decision that we make, um, uh, a couple of ticks down, um, when we're closer to construction in here. But again, all of this will meet all the requisite building codes. Um, one of the other items that I believe was, was brought up at one question, uh, at one point was would there be an area of, um, refuge? Yes, there will be an area of refuge in these buildings. So that's an, uh, a protected area that's built into the design of the building that allows in case of an emergency, someone can, um, be in a safe place, um, and wait for the first responders to, uh, uh, to come. Um, the building is, I'm going to be elevator surface. Some of the buildings have multiple elevator cores so that they're more efficient for the residents. And again, what we're trying to do is we're designing this smart for the residents because that's, you know, the, um, residents and, and the renters are smart now. They, they all look for amenities. They look for all of these features and safety features and, and we, we look to provide all of these items. So we provide elevators that are oversized in height. So at least one of the elevators will be oversized in height to enhance move-ins and all the elevators will be sized for stretchers as well. So, uh, and again, we are, um, happy, um, know I have not seen a fire report, but I've designed numerous buildings like this. Um, so I am happy to, um, work with the, uh, local authorities on locating Knox boxes and making sure that, um, any of the issues they have with, uh, trust plaque or signage or what have you that we accommodate and coordinate with that. That's an easy process. So one of the other, um, issues I was bringing up is design features and amenities. We've, um, we've, a- again, all, all of the design was, um, the starting point for this was, um, the ordinance as well as the settlement agreement, which also included provisions for green design. And these are, we've, we've, um, have met or exceeded all of the standards that were, um, proposed in here. So I believe we're in a, uh, a very good place. Um, each building has its own defined entry, entries and are essentially independently occupied. So they don't rely on a neighboring building. Um, this is something that Mr. Anderson was explaining that one building doesn't have a surplus of parking and the other one have a shortage. So you have to park at one building and walk over. They're truly independent, uh, structures. Each building has an amenity space as shown on the drawings. However, as I mentioned, um, uh, building D, which is the building on the ridgeline, um, is a bit more unique. It has more amenity spaces as well as we've included a rooftop deck for, uh, passive amenities for residents. As well, um, up on the roof, there are twenty units will have, um, private, um, roof terraces above their units. Balconies are also provided for residents and also to provide architectural interests on the facade. So you can see on this rendering in here that we have these wraparound terraces as well as these balconies. And all of these were carefully integrated with the design so that it, um, breaks up the building, provides a lot of architectural interest. And we feel that this was, um, a, uh, a very good response. One of the things I want to note is if you look carefully at the rendering over here, you will see downlights on each of the terraces or balconies. And the reason why we've done that is rather than provide a lantern on a wall that shines and throws the light out, um, horizontally, these aim down and are very, very controlled sources. So we believe that, um, this will provide, um, and eliminate glare. Um, it provides a, um, a cleaner illumination and eliminates glare, um, from the building to the joining areas. And this was, uh, something that was, was, um, brought up as, uh, uh, one of the comments last night. Uh, another thing that I want to mention is the handling of trash. So we have a trash, um, compactor in each building. We believe this is the gold standard. It's the right way to do this. Trash is collected. So you don't have to walk downstairs out the lobby or with a, with a, uh, one of your, uh, neighbors in the elevator carrying bags of trash or you're recycling. There's a room on each floor with a chute. Trash is dropped down, um, and it goes down to a compactor. The compactor compacts it into a container. It's brought out for collection. This is really the best way to do this. Uh, the, um, other issue, recycling is handled just a little bit differently. Um, we find that, um, the recycling tends to clog these, uh, these chutes because people will put a pizza box down there. They unfold, they open up. So we find that, um, it's more efficient, um, right now until there's a better technology that we collect the recycling inside each of these, um, trash rooms in bins. And the superintendent brings these down, collects them, brings them down to the garage. From the garage, they go in containers, often sometimes large toter cans, similar to li- larger versions of what you probably have at your home and they're brought out for, uh, collection by a hauler. So, um, one of the other buildings that we have designed and I will go, this is, um, I'll, I'll, I'm passing one of the other renderings. This is, uh, an end view of the building to show how the ends of the building step down and our landscape. And this gives pulling back several feet, um, and giving more of an overall view. You can kind of see how some of the elements, um, are, are working together. Uh, this building over here is that central clubhouse building. And this is as you drive up, this is, um, there's, uh, that, uh, rotunda that Mr. Klein was, uh, asking about. This is just, um, up the hill from, from, from that area. So as you drive up, you will see the back of the building, which is exposed. And, um, as you can imagine, all of these buildings and all, uh, um, all of these buildings, um, because there's a lot of topography, there's a lot of slope on the property. We've designed all the buildings to take advantage of the slope. So they're often nestled in, um, with an accessible entrance. All of these buildings are handicap accessible. And then the backs of the building, um, tend to be, uh, what I'll call daylight, um, or a walkout. Some people are familiar with the term a walkout basement. That's essentially what we, um, what we have here. So this, um, clubhouse is for, um, uh, tenants and their guests. Um, this is central to the job. And we have made this building a little bit different. So it has a different special feel, but we've used many of the same materials that are common to the, uh, residential buildings. So, um, there is an apartment that is shown in the clubhouse. This was brought up on one of the reports, I believe the planning report. And, um, I want to indicate there's nobody living in this building. This is a part of a leasing office. So this is, um, and an apartment so that, um, when, uh, a renter is coming, um, to look at the property, he, he or she can see the, um, layout of the apartment with the finishes and, um, basically without having to, um, navigate the site and find an empty apartment to, uh, to look at. And we find that this is a, a very, um, good strategy and, um, also nicer for the, the residents as well. Um, we believe that this, um, building will be kind of the center point and, um, it's a, um, large amenity structure. Um, basically to provide a centralized hub for the, the residents. Um, it will include both interior and exterior amenities. You can see there's some, um, uh, roof decks and balconies and areas in here for, um, congregation. Um, the, uh, again, there are outdoor spaces adjoining this. Um, now, one of the things that on the inside of the building, we've started labeling a number of these, um, clubhouse amenity amenities. But, um, a lot of these, um, change over time because they need to be responsive to the needs of the residents. So while the building we're proposing is static, um, some of these items will change over time. For instance, a, a business center may have a conference room and that may turn out, um, a couple of years later to become cubicles or something like that as a business center. So, um, these things can over time to get repurposed, but the idea of, of these spaces are, um, they're allowed for people to, um, residents to congregate. People who want to come, who may be, um, working out of their house can come and, um, utilize the, uh, the clubhouse as well. So I'm going to go back to the starting point in here that we were looking at. And, um, the color and materials that are shown on the, the rendering, this is an, um, an artistic conceptual view. Um, this is building D, but it's really typical of all the residential buildings. Um, color materials are suggestions. Um, these, um, are our best, um, selection at this point. It is possible that some of the colors and materials, um, will have to change slightly based on, um, what is available, um, in the marketplace because some, sometimes colors get discontinued. But this gives a, um, a, uh, a close, um, idea conceptually of what we were trying to do. Um, and if an alternate manufacturer came in, maybe the, the color will be a little faser or a little grayer or something like that. Um, the materials include brick, aluminum storefront at the entries, uh, decorative architectural railings, decorative, um, panels. We have, uh, balconies. Um, we also have many openings that you will see along the base of the building here. Um, and that what we have done is these are openings that are screened with architectural treatment that allows ventilation, but it also, um, hides the parking behind. All of the buildings, um, need, um, all the parking need to either be mechanically ventilated or naturally ventilated. Um, to be more in the spirit of a green building, we have tried to do these with natural ventilation where grading permits. There were a couple of instances on, um, certain areas on, on buildings that we are not, we, we believe we will not be able to do that. So certain of the proportions of the garages will need to be, uh, mechanically ventilated. Um, windows are all large and well proportioned for the contemporary, uh, feel of these buildings. And we've created, um, architectural, um, paneling, which is either, um, metal composite or fiber cement. Um, um, all of these, um, are, all the materials used are very, very low maintenance. The idea in here, they're high quality materials, have very low maintenance. And the idea is that the building will look good with very little maintenance for years to come. Um, if, as we have discussed on here, the the building as a whole is well broken up. And, um, again, these buildings were designed, um, compliant with the ordinance. Um, however, there's one small caveat. Due to the, um, um, way the buildings are graded. So, um, the buildings are always tucked into the hill. They, the buildings, um, all need to be handicap accessible. There's, there's no option there. So what we've done is worked with the existing grading and work with Mr. Anderson closely so that what we can do is create a, a situation where we get the roads to have the right pitch, the sidewalks to have the right pitch. And usually what happens is at the garage level is that was the equalizer. So we've had to make the garage taller in some instances than is necessary. And what that has done is there's a portion of the ordinance, uh, called, uh, section twenty-five dash nineteen E ten, which has to do with exposure of the ground floor. And we have a provision where we need to, um, uh, hold to fifty percent. But because of, um, these conditions in here, um, we are over fifty percent. Now, what does that mean? Well, we've mentioned that the buildings are built into grade where we can. But rather than drastically alter grade, put in retaining walls and other elements in here, we believe that it's far, um, better to create, um, more interesting architecture. Um, create architectural treatment of the ground floor and provide more, um, landscaping. And in a couple of places where we have more exposed, um, a wall, and these are the walls of the garage level in, in all cases, is those walls in there, um, we've created a, um, where we have one of those ventilation, um, holes. We've created a green wall and that green wall, um, will, um, take the place where we have a larger opening, um, where we have, um, on certain buildings where it is dropped down much lower that we will, that it'll, um, we will have, um, basically green vegetation growing on the, um, the, the kind of louvered frame system, um, protecting the garage. So, um, I believe Mr. Anderson had the, um, metrics in here for building A, building B, building C and building D for where, um, the proposed design was in excess of the fifty percent. Now, one of the things just to, um, um, all other provisions of the IH one ordinance and all of the building heights and other provisions are all conforming. So this was the only item that we were aware of that would be, um, we're looking for, uh, relief on. Um, one other item that I wanted to, um, bring up, and this is something that, uh, Mr. Anderson had discussed is that we had cut two sections through the building, um, through the site. So we took one. So we took one going over this side to 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 Hal. And down over here. Can you pan to the to the right? So down to Rosemont. So I will show you these two section views. And what, it's very hard to understand. We have a building here that's placed on a on a site. And there are all these lines and topo, but you can see this is a relatively flat area over here. And you can see in the fenced area how steep it gets. Steepness you could see because the topography lines are much closer together. So I'm going to go and show respective. This is that first diagrammatic section AA, which shows over here going toward Hal. And you can see respectively where the houses, the existing vegetative tree line, and actually how it kind of flattens out here. Now, there was discussion that was brought up about, and I'll, and I'll actually show the other, the other view because I think that's that's even is is a lot more telling. Is now you, you see it's at a completely different scale. Here's the cross section of the building. You see the flat portion of the ridge. This is at section BB. And the house in scale is back down over here. So you can kind of get a sense of, it's very hard to understand when you look at the site from from the adjoining area or look at a floor plan, you don't quite get a sense of scale. I think this does give you a good sense of scale here. Now, one of the things that we were discussing, and Mr. Anderson, we 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 talked a little bit about this because he was asking questions. And he had shared the geotechnical reports with us. And what is very interesting is the best the best, the best way to to support a building is on bedrock. We have an opportunity here to be at bedrock or close to bedrock. Do I design these things? Well, to a degree, yes. But we hire, we we read the geotechnical reports. We provide them to a structural engineer who designs the foundation systems for the building. And in collaboration with each other, they decide how deep and what type of foundation needs to be used for the building. The conditions here, for me, are not scary, but almost bordering on ideal. The negative to this is that there may be some rock that has to be moved away from certain areas to construct the buildings. There, there was little room to change a lot of the roadway elevations. So Mr. Anderson kind of gave us whatever leeway we had, but there was not a lot of leeway there. But what is, what will happen in here is when rock is encountered and there is shallow rock in portions of the site. Per the geotechnical reports, they're indicating that top portions of this may be able to be ripped and removed because they're already fractured. And that's the investigation that Mr. Anderson was was talking about with a contractor. The contractors don't just make these decisions. It's done with engineers and studies. In addition to this is that a building like this, it's not that an architect designs it. It's not just that a structural engineer is involved and a geotechnical engineer. But there's also inspections, inspections by the town, and also third party independent inspections. So the developer has to hire these inspectors as well that are looking at strength of concrete, placement of reinforcing bars and a lot of elements like this. So there are a lot of levels of design and and redundancy, all to create an enhanced factor of safety for the the construction. I don't look at this as anywhere, like when you look at this and you and you see this in scale, it's nowhere hanging off a cliff. It is not at all concerning. But that's not just me. The geotech engineer and the structural engineer will be looking at that and determining how deep he needs these to go and to what level they need to go to get either satisfactory soils or to pin to existing bedrock. So let's I think I have covered all of the items that I wanted to cover in my testimony. I do have the remainder of my architectural drawing submittals with me here as well. But I don't know whether at this scale on a screen, I don't know whether it's useful time to walk through and talk about all the, you know, the way the buildings are laid out. But if there are questions, I can certainly point to one of these exhibits to aid any of the board members or.
I just have a couple of follow up questions for Mr. Appel before we turn it over to the board. Mr. Appel, obviously, there are a hundred affordable housing units proposed. And there are state regulations which govern the number of one, two, and three bedroom units that are required. Are you familiar with those?
Yes, that's exactly what Mr., I I think it was testified by Mr.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm as the architect and we are looking at some unit layouts now. Does do the affordable units comply with those regulations?
Hundred percent correct.
Okay, thank you very much. And also with respect to the amenities, is it fair to say that a large majority of the amenities are focused towards the center of the overall site?
Well, the largest amenity is the clubhouse, which is at the center of the of the site. So I will, let's see. I think the best way to show this over here is our clubhouse is over here. So this is, this is the center of the site. This is that rotunda, the traffic circle that Mr. Klein was referring to earlier. So we have the the clubhouse structure over here. And then directly to the side, we have two tennis courts and a pool. The tennis courts are up on the high side. And then there's a transition grade wise to the pool on the lower side. And then obviously, I will say, building A, which is in two pieces, building B, building C, and to the right is building D. And building D is also in two separate pieces. So it presents itself as as two separate buildings.
Thank you, Larry. I have nothing further for Mr. Appel.
Thank you, Mr. Appel. So with Ms. Capford, do you have any questions for Mr. Appel about his testimony?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few questions.
Pete Lowery.
Yes, I'll do my best here. I do have a few questions. One is about roof drainage. Are you at the point in your design where you have a sense for where downspouts will be? And any comment on that?
So this, these buildings, for the most part, have internal drainage structures. So they're taken down through the building because they're flat roof. The only building that, well, the the maintenance building has a pitch roof, but and the clubhouse has a partial pitch roof. But most of the of the roof water is going to be coming down and is going to be collected and conveyed into the drainage systems that Mr. Anderson designed. What's good about this is it's all clean water. It doesn't have to be treated.
Okay. Yeah, one other question about the roofs. What other, I I know that, like you just shared, you know, some are flat, some are slopes. What kinds of equipment will you need to have, if any, on on some of the roof structures?
So for the most part, and I can go to one of the, one of the roofs. Let's see. Well, really, any of them. The, each of the apartments are going to have a condensing unit. So for the most part, all of these condensing units will be located up on the roof. They take a small area, they're tended, they tend to, we call them like a condenser farm. They, we huddle them together and they're kind of pods on the on the on the roof. And they take a portion of the roof. All of the buildings, A, B, and C, do not have occupiable roofs. Building D does. So there, we basically worked around all of those condensing units, so that we provided programmatic space as well as condensing space. Space for the condensers.
Okay, and and those spaces are separate.
Yes.
You mentioned in your testimony that you had incorporated green design features. Can you share more specifically about what those features are?
They are fully enumerated in the settlement agreement. These have to do with certain types of lighting, certain types of plumbing fixtures, efficiency of heating and air conditioning. We are designing the roofs so that the structural system can accommodate future solar panels. So there's a bunch of items like this. Also has to do with colors, lighting that does not project, you know, that the lighting is is facing downward so that you don't get a lot of light filtering up into the sky. So efficiency of windows, efficiency of appliances. In many cases, we have designed these similar to provisions in Energy Star and 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 other green standards. And but we are not going through the whole process to do all the certification. We we have a a series of items in the in that are outlined in the settlement agreement. Some of them you have to are mandatory and some of them are optional. And the ones that are optional, you you have to do a certain number of them to comply. So we're, we we've gone through that. And that is actually one of the reasons why we went to a pitched roof because the efficiency for the equipment that we can place on a on a flat roof is much higher. We couldn't get the efficiencies to work on some of the other equipment.
And just for the record, that the settlement agreement provision Mr. Appel was referring to, it is the design terms and conditions contained in Exhibit C.
Yeah, one more question about the roof. I know you said there are like roof terraces and and public areas and there are balconies as well. Can you tell us about, I imagine there's a typical height for like fence around that? I'm just thinking of kids, you know, are kids roaming around up there? Are they going to be climbing the sides? Like, how how can you describe how they're kept safe?
So there, there's, there are two, there are two issues that 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 need to, that need to be addressed in here. Typically, one is sometimes we do higher elements as windbreaks. And sometimes you do mandatory for what's called a guardrail. The guardrails need to be forty two inches.
And can you describe, I know, I know you talked about accessibility. Can you describe maybe how someone who has a physical disability might navigate the site? Like, get from a, I mean, this would just be a typical, like, get from a car to an apartment?
So, so if you, I'll, I'll come to, for instance, I'll just randomly select building C. You drive into the building as a resident and you will have an accessible stall right opposite the lobby. So you literally drive in, park, walk across the hatched area right into the lobby, up the elevator to your apartment. So that's as simple as is simple can be. And and every portion of the building will be accessible per FHA guidelines.
Okay. And then can you describe how or what what differences might exist between an affordable unit versus like a luxury unit?
So here's a, we've, we've colored them a little bit differently. So here's, here's a COE unit. And here's a one bedroom unit. So you can see they're relatively similar. The where the COE units are located in general on the shorter side of the of the building. As I mentioned, the the hallway, the corridor is offset a little bit. So we generally have slightly larger units on one side of the building. Most of these units will be have dens. That's why they're a little deeper. It allows having a little kind of nook or alcove that is a good place to put a desk or element like that. But as you can see, they're kind of integrated and spread around, you know, on each of the floors. And it was done, you know, in, you know, intently that when you walk the building, all the doors look the same. You can't tell who's an affordable unit and who is a market unit.
And even like fixtures inside or the or or features inside the apartments, are they close? And I mean, are you able to describe?
There, we haven't gotten that far. They're, they're usually similar, but usually the kitchens are a little, you know, a little bit smaller, a little tighter. Sometimes will not have an island where a market unit may have an island. But they still will have a washer dryer. You know, it's not like that that they're missing, you know, an element, just some of the elements may be a little bit smaller. But they're, they all have the the same type of heating and air conditioning, washer and dryer, and, you know, you know, full kitchens and similar, similar bathrooms, et cetera.
I think that's it for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'll begin by piggybacking off Ms. Capford for the affordable housing units. I believe in previous applications to the board, we've conditioned that, you know, appliances not be cosmetically substantially different than or or second tier compared to market rate units. If we can, I'd just like to submit that, that we.
The terminology materially is similar.
Materialally similar.
Thank you. That's what we used in our application previously.
That's something that I would ask the, you know, the developer.
Well, as available based on your supply, right? Okay, that's one thing. I took a lot of notes, so I'm going to be jumping around.
No worries.
Looking at PB dash four point seven.
So that was the site section, right?
That's a markup of each type of unit.
Oh, okay. Let me go to there, okay.
Okay, so this, this represents every type of unit that would be available across all buildings now.
No, no, these are, these are representative typical buildings because there are a lot of, because we've carved the building out and created lots of nuances design wise, there are a lot of other unit types. So but these are representative, these were our starting blocks. So when you have a building that, let's say, has a turn where the building kind of angles like a boomerang, is that what we've, we'll have to do is we'll have to kind of modify the unit and make it a little bigger, make it a little smaller. But this gives a starting point for the for the units. And as I said, is that these units will go with a sales and marketing team and we will fine tune this. The units, you know, could jog a little one way or another way. The building's not going to grow, but some of the way some of the units are configured may alter slightly.
All right. But at this moment, these are the planned type. You have one bedroom, one bedroom plus den, two bedroom, three bedroom.
Correct.
Okay, and that's pretty much no more, no further iterations on them?
Oh, we're, we're, we're not proposing a four bedroom. We're not proposing any studios at this time. I don't want to say like never is never, but this, this is the typical unit mix. That and, and we'll just have permutations of, of same.
All right. And you mentioned that the internal hallways will not be centered. Is that for all four?
But that's how we set up each of the buildings because it, it just gave more variety to have some units with dens and some without dens and.
Okay, understood. Regarding the shared amenities. Could you give us? I don't know, kind of a brief overview of the least proposed, what's, what do all the buildings have in common? And what can only be found in the clubhouse? What is unique to each building aside from, you know, you've, you've explained building D has a rooftop terrace?
Okay, so to, to go through, I'll, I'll, it's a, a little tough to go through. At this, you know.
Yeah, I understand.
Because it's going to be very small, but this is building A1 and A2. So what you can see is a common parking podium with two boomerang masses that are separated with a outdoor courtyard between. And at the two corners in here, we created amenity structures to utilize this courtyard. Now, the roadway is up here, so you basically can go from the roadway right onto this courtyard through these vestibules and open to the build, you know, to, into the building. The main entrance is on the lower side at these two lobbies that are in the two corner knuckles of the building. So we have these two amenity, amenities over here and we have an outdoor amenity space. The remaining portions of this building are all market here. They're, they're all units. There, there's no other amenities. When we go to another building type is that we have a amenity space right next to the main lobby. So you have the lobby over here, you have an amenity, and then you have a little bit of an outdoor space directly outside that. So building B has this one small amenity. And when you go to building C, in a similar fashion, we have this outdoor courtyard over here kind of tucked into the building and we have an amenity space adjacent to the lobby. So that's the formula for building A, B, and C. Building D is a little bit unique because when you come into the center of the building, we have a gym at the ground floor. So separate from the amenities, I'm going to say the standard. Every building has an elevator core, has stairs, has a trash room, has a mailroom and a package room. All those things are, I, I consider those almost necessities, not, not amenities. But over here, this building has a gym. When you come upstairs, you have other amenity spaces. You have an outdoor amenity space above the lobby over here. And on each corner, you have a small amenity space. Can you pan up to the top a little bit? Yes, and then above the gym, we have a club room. And then when we go upstairs again, this repeats itself with these small amenity at, at that same corner, they're all stacked over here, but these will no longer, you're above where you have the outdoor space. So these have no way to get to the outside, but we still have these amenity spaces over here. And if you can pan down, and then we have this lounge. We're going to call this the Sky Lounge and I'll explain to you why, because we're going to go to the rooftop. The rooftop, all of these hatched areas that are dark, all of these hatched areas are private for one of the, one of the residents. These condenser farms in here will be screened where they'll have the mechanical equipment. But rather than spread that all the way around the building, what we've done is we've created these private roof terraces with a small little bulkhead for stairs and little place to have like a little kind of wet bar kitchenette over here. And it's just a nice private space that these residents can, can use. And in addition, if you can pan to the left a little bit, we have, this is a larger public space inside the, at the roof level. It has a larger view toward into the development. So this is looking toward the clubhouse. And this smaller element with is a view toward the New York skyline. So I'll go to the clubhouse. The clubhouse has a mix of lots of different amenities. Did you want me to walk through the clubhouse also or?
Yes.
So I'm coming in, you have a large common vestibule and a stair. That is, we call that a monumental stair because it's not enclosed, so it's just more visual elevator. We have a private, private dining area, then an open area here for some passive. A game room, bar, home theater, a sitting area. This is the leasing office over here. This is the model apartment. And this is a, basically a business center, kind of like a WeWork. Upstairs, oh, this is the basement below. Is the services that are more connected toward kids. There, we are proposing a golf simulator. We have different, different types of. We have different types of toilet rooms, servicing the pool. And this is exercise and yoga as well. This area here is more of a kids' area to the side. And then we have an upper level that we have, if you go down, which was a kind of a, like a members only kind of club area that would have some interior space and some outside space. And we've created two-story volumes, both on the upside and the downhill side. Where we have open two-story spaces with an overlook from there. So we've tried to kind of make this very flexible and adaptable so that we can reprogram. There, these type of things, just by changing some furniture, kind of repurpose themselves.
All right, thank you for the walkthrough. That is helpful. I have several follow-up questions. I guess first thing, just to clarify, so the gym, there's a gym in the clubhouse and the only other building that has a gym is building D.
That is correct.
Okay, and all of the residents are able to access the gym in the clubhouse? But is that the intention for the gym in building D? Is that only accessible to?
Typically, what it, this is really a, a, an ownership decision and a sales and marketing. What was envisioned was the amenities that were part of D were specific to residents at, at D because this was such a robust clubhouse. We felt that was, but that, that's really an ownership decision.
Okay. Just to clarify, and some of this might be still under discussion, I believe we spoke about it yesterday. Usage and access for the clubhouse, the kennel and dog park. Residents only is, is that or?
You're talking about the clubhouse?
Well, I guess, yeah, we can say the clubhouse specifically first, residents and guests or?
So the clubhouse is typically residents or guests? And what I would say, this is, this is an ownership, you know.
Some of my questions may be, a lot of them might be.
But the, my understanding is that the clubhouse is, is residents and guests.
Okay. Taking a step back, looking at everything, so are, do we have security, twenty-four seven security onsite or do we have a concierge or is everything unmanned and just?
So we, right now, that again is an ownership and kind of a, you know, part of a sales and marketing strategy. So I don't know exactly how that would be staffed. We have allowed space for a concierge at building D.
Okay, Mr. Block, feel free to jump in at any point. A lot of my questions might be there. It's, I'm trying to work out how, how this is going to function overall, so.
Very much appreciate the questions. Please keep going.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, we ask you to be a little quieter, so there's going to be a record maintained here and she can't hear everything. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Okay. I guess looking at the rooftop deck in building D, first of all, the.
I'm sorry, which, which building were you?
Building D.
Yes.
Okay, so you mentioned the intention, the original intention of the owners was for the rooftop deck to only be accessible to building D residents. And that's, did you, did you mention that there was a rooftop deck for, for the clubhouse as well?
There, there's a lot of outdoor space at the clubhouse, but that rooftop deck is part of the, that upper floor that we were talking about, which was, which was right now initially planned, but that's really an ownership. I don't, I don't know whether that's really been solidified.
Okay.
But there's, there's an abundance of indoor and outdoor spaces and terraces and gardens and.
Okay, but not, not a rooftop that people could. For the, for the purposes of, you know, this rooftop is for partying, celebrating, gathering.
Correct, it's, it's intended to be passive, passive space.
As far as how this is separated from the individual units and divided, the space is divided. How are we dealing with light and noise? You know, what rules, are, are there already rules proposed to put in place to, you know, quiet hours? So that we're not affecting the resident, the private residence?
I, 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 I would make the assumption is that the leases and rules of the community would have limitations of the hours that any of the public spaces are, are available and open.
Do you have plans for specific lighting on the public Sky Lounge as of right now?
There, there will be lighting, but our intent is to keep this lighting to be low baller type lighting so that it's not up high, but it's kind of illuminating the lower surfaces, so.
And that would be set to only, you know, run at certain times of the day?
Well, normally the, there would be a certain time that the, and I, I, I don't have an answer for you on, on when that would be shut off. Whether it's nine o'clock, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock. But the, I, I would, I would assume ownership would set reasonable standards for that.
Okay. How, how is it physically? Because we're looking at an aerial view. How is it physically divided from, how, how are these side by side?
So rooftop, but where you have two of these private terraces meeting. We've actually created planters so that this will be a vegetated planter with basically a screen similar to what you would kind of find as a, as a fence in somebody's backyard. So it would be a element going across, but we provided some planters in here. When we get to these main areas, maybe some of these areas, rather than being a hard fence may also be planters also. We're like, we're showing a planter over here. Maybe these will end up wrapping around. But the intention here is that you will have, the residents will have a little bit of privacy. And it, it's meant to be kind of a neat, cool place to hang out. That's.
Okay, thank you. In lieu of one of our other board members, Pete Smarold, not being here, former fire chief, just going to ask some questions about accessing the roofs. Full stairwells to, to access each roof or do we have hatches anywhere?
No, no, we, we are bringing up. We have full stairs providing access, so we have a stair, a full stair and another full stair. And this, this lobby and stair go down to the Sky Lounge, which is directly below this. So this side has two stairs. One stair over here, another stair over here. So we have we, we have two stairs to handle the access to the roofs.
That's, and that holds true for each building?
Correct.
Okay, so no, no hatches?
So that, and, and actually on the other buildings, we will typically, that where we don't have an occupiable roof, we will have one stair go up that way for maintenance, fire access, safety. You will have at least one stair where you have an occupiable roof, you have to have two.
Okay, good, terrific. Yes, we want, what we want to hear, I know Pete loves full stairwells as opposed to hatches.
Will be, and there will be stand pipes and there will be, we've already checked the, the heights per NFPA sprinkler code. And so all the, all the, all the, all those things that we want to make sure worked.
All right, terrific. You mentioned the alarm system. A signal reaching the emergency responders directly.
It's a, it's a monitored system, so we usually go to a monitoring station that will contact the first responders.
Okay.
And there will, and there will be a Knox box on each building as well for the.
Okay, you proposing AEDs be available and accessible in any?
Haven't got the, you, you're, I haven't gotten that far on.
Yeah, we'll want to revisit and condition that, especially around the gyms. Especially around the gyms and tennis area, any, any physical activity especially. Okay, you mentioned backup generators, emergency lighting. The, the natural ventilation that you mentioned, that was in regards to the garage only, correct? When we saw the visual rendering?
That, that's, that is correct. You know, that, that, that's only for the, the podium level of the garage.
Terrific. The large windows, do, are those treated anyway? Are we, what, what are we doing for protection from heat and glare?
So the settlement agreement actually provided fairly rigorous U-values for all the window systems. So you're, you're already at a high performance window per the settlement agreement.
And the architectural panel, the low ma, low maintenance materials you mentioned, that was, that's the facade.
That's facade, that, that's exterior.
The trash compactor, do we have an idea, i- is that demarcated anywhere or proposed trash compactors? Like, do we know the size, the noise, how they operate? Smells emanating?
Um, so what I will show you is, why don't, why don't I go down just to if, can we zoom in over, let's say a little bit more over to this area? Oh, okay, so here's elevator stair, that's the trash room right there. So you're going to go in here, there's going to be a door, a bin door to a chute. You're going to drop the trash down there and there will probably be a row of some shelving and toter cans for putting recycling in there. So basically, resident gets out of their apartment, walks down toward the elevator, drops their trash and it's a simple process.
So the size of the trash compactor is?
The trash compactor is not there, that's only a chute.
Okay.
In the garage level.
Garage level, that's what I'm asking about.
Going to be like four times the size and it's going to have a compactor unit, which is remarkably small. And the containers are remarkably small. It's amazing, these things just push and crush the garbage into like a third of the volume. It's there.
Where, so what I'm getting at is that you're anticipating that the proposed trash compactor will be able to handle the volume of, you know, waste produced by, say, full occupancy or eighty percent. And that maintenance will regularly, you know, remove these.
Correct, the strategy is those containers typically, they will. Correct. The strategy is those containers typically they will um engage a hauler and they will figure out. Do they need two or three of those to handle, let's say, biweekly or or whatever, you know, the um collection, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to state for the record, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, no, please.
I just that. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My apologies. Just the level of detail, obviously, some of this is a little premature, the more detailed we get. And I appreciate Mr. Appel to the extent he can address some of the more specific items, but he did allude a couple of times, some of these will be ownership decisions. After the buildings are are built, but we do intend to fully comply with the design terms and conditions of the settlement agreement.
Terrific, terrific. Yeah, I I understand and I appreciate that. I'm just as much as I can get out. Uh, thank you. So uh you mentioned handicap accessibility and you mentioned FHA. I just wanna I just wanna understand, are we talking ADA compliance as well as?
Um, so FHA is the equivalent of ADA for residential buildings.
Okay.
So it's a it's just a simple, that's the term. If I said ADA, I would, everyone would know what I meant, but I'd be wrong. So so I'm saying FHA.
Thank you. Good to clarify that.
And it's also there's a barrier free subcode, um so we will be conforming with that as well.
Okay. Can we look at the dog park and maintenance building?
This is um this is obviously the maintenance building.
Okay, and. Well, I guess I don't need too much. I. More so just looking at them on the on the map, actually.
Um, so.
Or we can, you actually, you're you're close to it. We can go to the dog park or the kennel, the kennel. You go to the kennel.
Do you want the you want the overall like site plan view?
Yeah.
So I can I can go to. Um, the trouble is this this background may maybe a little older that. Over here. So um this this all is, I think, a little bit uh. Um, all this is a little, this is an older background that was used when we did this. So so um this building is pretty close. But this building over here turned around, so it faces this parking lot.
And and the lower, the uh smaller building towards the bottom is the kennel.
That's a that's a kennel going through um uh basically in this area over here. So the idea is that you pull in over here and you pull back and this parking lot is shared between the maintenance building. Which has very little parking need and um this kennel building, which also has very little parking need. So it just seemed to be a good shared arrangement over here. Um, the the difference is instead of this building sitting over here. It was moved up in here to engage that parking lot.
Okay. Well, uh, as pertains to the kennel. Now, I'm not a dog owner, so I don't know the the fully, what what is the scope of this building aside? I mean, I assume you're going to be, dog owners would be grooming. Uh, and I don't know what else. We're not we're not talking about overnight boarding of these animals.
So um that 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 portion of the scope in here. I would probably defer that to um ownership to discuss because um that is not as clearly developed. As all the other pieces of the uh of the project.
Okay.
It's a um uh the um we were looking, the the whole model for this is. I know the the owner was looking at several different models. Um, I would leave it to him on which of those models is the the closest fit. To where he's um uh posturing now.
Okay, and I and I understand that you're still working it out. I would I would like an explanation of, you know, the the full intended use of the kennel. And especially if there is, you know, the possibility of um. Say, doggy daycare or something like overnight boarding, you know, something to ensure uh that the animals are being monitored and they're safe and. Uh, et cetera. Can we look at the garage? And I think I'm just about done with my.
Which um which.
Any of the garages?
So uh, I mean, I can do. I mean, there there.
Yeah, we can zoom in. Okay, so uh just to clarify, the all of the handicap accessible parking spaces. Are uh single spaces, not tandem spaces, correct?
Always, yes.
Okay, um all is that, does that hold true for electric charging?
Um, so um the electric charging. Can be anything. So what we need to, what we always needed to do just for um FHA. We need to make sure that um wherever we put a charger, every type of stall is covered. So if you have a handicap stall, you have you, you would have to have a charger at one of these. Just, you know, just so that you have that diversity. Um, normally in here, these chargers will be a single charger, but often will have two or three. Can serve as two or three different vehicles. So they're often placed where they can serve as multiple vehicles. They can be put um uh at a tandem stall or a single stall.
Okay.
Either either work.
All right. I'm looking at some of these angles with single stalls, uh sharp corners, and I'm wondering, will some of these be marked? For compact vehicles only?
So where we need to, we we would, in some cases, we actually have larger spaces that accommodated. Um, storage bins at the foot of the um cars, so um in in most of these cases, we actually had extra, extra space. Um, that what's unique about here is anyone coming here is coming here because they have an assigned stall. So they know to get the easiest way to pull into this stall is they're going to pull in this way or or something. Where if they want to get to this stall, it's maybe easier to come around the left side rather than the right sides. But because they um it's their stall, they're not, you know, circling around finding something. It's actually quite efficient and they kind of know how to maneuver around, usually know who's next to you and.
Okay, well, for example, I'm looking at the uh triangular peninsula, the bottom right.
Over here?
Uh, no, the there, right? The edge of that parking space, you know, you see, it looks like it's clipping. Uh, the turn radius, for lack of a better term here. That and the one just uh across from it to, yeah, those both look tight on the end. Is that's what I'm getting at.
I don't I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I mean, I I personally don't have a problem with it, but I would defer if if people in my team wanted to. Uh, request to stripe that differently or ask for de minimis to make that a compact.
I'm all for striping and and any other uh markings where it makes sense. The, so so to clarify, all. Parking spaces throughout each underground garage are assigned? Are there no? Free to use parking spaces?
So except for D, I mentioned that since we didn't have enough to cover the point five stalls um per unit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which has to be unassigned so that it can be shared and used for guests. So um D, I have a portion of the garage. So over here, you have a security gate coming into the garage. Whereas let's just say I didn't have enough surface parking, I would have put the security, let's say, gate across one side or across over here. So that um a certain portion, so a certain portion of the garage in D um is open access. And the remaining is going to be um um now, even though it's open, only the stalls. Let's say you can have one row of stalls that will be unassigned, but the others are going to have numbers and they're going to be assigned stalls. So people can't can't park there.
Okay, yeah, I'm just wondering some. I'm envisioning people having guests, they direct their guests only to, well, first of all, they wouldn't be able to get into the garage, right? Is that gonna be some type of FOB access?
If if in this building, it's a FOB access, a guest wouldn't get there unless um a resident came down. And brought their FOB down to get them in.
Yeah, because I'm I'm also envisioning some type of kind of like rush loading situation. Maybe people don't want to. Park in their assigned spot because they need to move something quickly to the end. So I'm just wondering about open spot. That's why I'm asking the question, but you've answered it.
The most accessible spots are going to be the garage spots. I I couldn't see them wanting to not take your own spot.
When it comes to the tandem parking, how how common is this?
Um, I'm going to say probably eighty percent of the the garage jobs we do have have um some tandem.
In New Jersey?
Yes, actually, New Jersey, New York and Pennsylvania.
Okay. Um. Because I'm also envisioning just, well, first, I guess, the tandem spots, the way you envision in assigning them. Each tandem spot will be long to a multiple room unit. So so what I'm what I'm getting at is, do you do you see a scenario where people not living in the same unit are sharing a tandem assignment?
It that that that's already been worked through.
Okay.
It's it's we've we've checked, we've 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 actually looked at that and that's one of the reasons why we actually have a couple of extra spots. Because we've made sure that balancing act um is is working well.
Okay, and the way you explained it earlier is is, you know, if you had a small garage uh in a single family home, you would uh coordinate. Moving one out when it, so this is typically not seen as additionally messy or dangerous in some way?
It seems it seems to work. I was I I I was a little um questioning of it the first time we did it. And um when I see these in operation and the feedback I get from the the developers, most of the developers I work with. Have multiple projects, multiple buildings, so if it doesn't work, they will not repeat it.
Okay.
And this is one of the things they repeat.
All right. Okay, so it's just a matter of people being extra cognizant as they back out from the, for the, yeah, as to not scrape or damage another car. Um. Yeah, I think all. End my questioning for now. I might add some for the uh traffic engineer, but thank you.
Chairman Bagol, may I just address a point raised by Mr. Cardozo? Um, I just wanted to point out, you asked about the potential uses for the dog uh area. I'm just reading from the ordinance and it includes the option for onsite pet service that shall be permitted to offer walking services, pet sitting services, a pet spot. Or grooming service, overnight boarding or related services. So all of those uses are listed in the ordinance. Obviously, the final ver- version of the this is not determined at this time.
Terrific. Thank you both.
At this time, we're gonna have a ten minute bio break.
Got him at the hatch.
But.
Yeah.
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 we are returning to the meeting. Uh, and at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Chairman Bagoff. I maintain back on the record. Mr. Wilks, you're up, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Um, my two colleagues have asked a number of great questions and I got some answers too. But with the underground parking, for the underground parking, we have, um, is that going to be level or is that going down into a ramp to go underneath the building? How's that set up?
Gen- generally level. Be, it's building by building. It's generally level, but there, there will be some adjustments, you know, as, as needed, you know, getting the grade married into the building.
Okay.
But it'll be subtle. It'll be subtle. It's not going to be this.
Right. It's not going to be severe.
Correct.
But that's the only building that's going to have the underground is, is D, excuse me?
Oh, no, no. All, all, all the, all the buildings are planted in a similar, you have basically, they're all built into the hill.
Okay. Now, is there any other connections between the buildings underground underneath for the, they're all separate, right?
There's no way to connect to go underneath. Except for the, um, A has an A1 and an A2. So it's under, on a common podium, you've got two buildings. And D is a common podium with two buildings. So, um, those are kind of connected. So the lower floors connect and the upper floors don't.
So the way it's kind of set up, it seems like D is going to be the, the gym is going to have the, the rooftop. It's, that's going to be more of the exclusive, so to speak, by, I guess by.
It wasn't, it wasn't, I, I, I wouldn't use the term exclusive. It was, it was intended to, um, capture, somebody who wanted to spend a little bit more to have different amenities and features.
Okay. But so that, but the option to go to that area is going to be open to everybody there. That's what you're saying.
Of course.
It's going to be up. But so how will they get access? Everybody's going to have a key fob to be able to get access to everybody's building? Or will it be exclusive?
No, no, no. The, I, I, I think you, I, my understanding is you have access to get into your building and your unit, um, and the clubhouse.
And the clubhouse.
That not to go from building to building.
Right.
That, that's normally not, not done, but that's an ownership issue.
Okay. Now, how is storage going to be done for any, any tenants? And do you have any areas for excess stores?
We do. We have in the garage, we've carved out any place that we don't need for, uh, for parking. We've created, um, storage. We've also carved out, um, some limited storage areas. And, um, there are some nooks and crannies that we can try and exploit in the future if residents need that space.
So all residents will have access to that? To have an option to have that?
My, my guess is it'll either be a, um, a for purchase or, um, or some other, or first come, first served. I don't know. I, I don't know how they'll, they'll, uh, they'll divvy those up.
Anyone, just show me where that is going to be located at?
So, as a, for instance, in here is there's, uh, you see, you have like these little kind of spots in here every so often.
Yes.
Those are where we have ability to put either a mechanical closet or a storage room. And then, um, as I showed on one of the earlier slides, where our parking stall, let's say, has 22 or 24 feet in depth, where we only need, let's say, 18 feet, we can put a little bit of storage, uh, container at the foot of the garage stall.
Okay. Will it be separate mailrooms for all these areas?
Each, each building has a separate mailroom and a separate package room.
Okay.
There's no pods on the, on the, you know, there's no pods around the site or stuff like that. They're in the buildings.
Okay. Um, that's all my questions right now.
Thank you, Mr. Alper.
Thank you. Um, a lot of mine were stolen as well. Um, on, on the exposed foundation, um, on the requirement in the ordinance on the exposed, exposed foundation, uh, what's the reason for, for the work for the no more than 50% requirement? Is that aesthetic or is it something else?
Um, I'm going to say originally that tied into that there were, um, provisions in the code, um, so that the basement would not be considered a story. Um, but we're, you know, that, you know, notwithstanding, um, we don't need to address that portion of the, of the building code. Because of the way the, the podium is, we're permitted to have that as a story. So it didn't matter. So it's, I think that's where that provision came up. And in a perfect world, I would like to grade up. But to do that, I think would be so disturbing to other issues. It's just, you, you know, it's like, be careful what you wish for.
Right.
It, it, it would end up having retaining walls and more, um, mechanical ventilation. And, and that would end up having sloped entries to, uh, to the garages and.
Can we go to the, I, I think the very first rendering is probably a, a good one for that, that shows the garage area.
So, uh.
Yeah, I think that one's probably the best. I, I, I know this is very subjective, but to, to my eye, especially the louvers where you can see the cars and, and the, and the more of the gray color on the bottom. It's, it's much more of a, like a city look that I, I think, as opposed to like, you know, a suburban township. In fact, a rural part of a suburban township look. And I don't know, you know, to what extent that's really, you know, my place to stay, but it's, it's, it, it just looks a little bit out of place with the setting, I think, more than anything else to my eye. And I don't know if that's because it's the exposed foundation or if it's just this particular artistic treatment of it, or if it's something else.
So, so I'll, I'll explain a little, a little bit of the, you know, the, the, um, these trees are, are small. So as these trees mature and get larger, um, that there's going to be more screening and buffering. Um, what we wanted to do is the, the buildings tend to get dirty and get tired looking when you have light colored or not durable. So we thought that the dark colored brick down low on the buildings would be very successful in that and would also tie into dark windows. And then have the remainder of the building be very light and transparent with lots of glass. So that, that's what our strategy was. Now where the buildings come down much deeper, um, what we can do and we have done, not on this rendering, but on some of the architectural elevations, is we've taken some of these, um, dark areas where you have the, um, access, the ventilation access and actually put, uh, vegetation growing inside of it, what I call green wall. And we've done that where we have the larger exposures in here. I would say this in here is kind of bordering on whether it's not large enough to, to do. But, um, we are utilizing that and we've utilized that on a number of places on other building facades, just not on, on this particular.
Do you have an example, do you have an example of what that would look like, the green wall?
I don't, I don't have a colored example. I might just have like what we, you know, we're just showing it on the elevation. So it's going to be black and white. I don't think it's going to give you the, the depiction.
Gotcha. But it's, it's essentially vegetation growing on the louvers themselves or?
Um, correct. It's, it's, um, you basically grow, um, you're, you grow from, from the ground up and it grows, um, into and around these, um, these kind of aluminum rails.
Hmm. Does it end up looking like a solid piece of greenery or does it like sort of show like stripes like on the?
No, it gets pretty solid, solid looking.
I, I, there's a building I pass in Newark sometimes that I know has a, a wall that looks like, I always assumed it was fake grass on one.
The, you can do it as natural and you can also do it as synthetic.
Okay, so it might look like that, okay, I get it. I think, I think my only other question is probably more of an ownership or planner question on the trash, after the trash is compacted, if that's intended to be removed by a private hauler or by the township.
Yeah, it's, most of these buildings are all private.
Good, okay, that's all I've got, thank you.
Is that a condition, private?
Yes. Thank you. Will you consider condition of having a, a green roof in some of the areas that are open? Where you have greenery on the roof, grass, other plantings?
So, that, that's a more complicated question.
I like to ask those.
The, what I, what I will say right now is that the, I don't think this is dictated by the settlement agreement, and by the way, the settlement agreement is quite excessive above code.
I'm not arguing, I'm just asking.
It's, it's a significant, so that would be something I would need to, you know, work through, because it's, it's complicated, is you have to make the building taller, you have to change the structure, you have to, there's, there's a lot of components to do that.
Put some pots out. We'll, we'll put some pots out with green.
Well, there are, there are going to be planters, but, but when you're saying a green roof, I'm, I'm talking about like where you take the broad area and you put cedum down.
Make it partial, you don't have to do anything that you will structurally change it, I'm just asking if you could put more greenery, maybe small areas of grassland, that's not going to change the structure of the roof.
I would, I would say building, building, building D, and also building A, that, that amenity deck, and also building C, the amenity deck, I think all of those, as far as like, I would say, if it, if we're free to use potted planters and things like that, I, I would say we definitely can incorporate that into.
I'm just going to ask you to come back to us and give us an idea. Secondly, how many parking spaces do you have on the total project? It was testified, yes, I think it was a thousand seventy-six.
I, I think ten seventy plus one oh two.
Okay.
Is that?
Okay, and you, and you need nine sixty-six, as I recall?
Nine sixty-six, and that's without doing the EV credit.
Right, so I'm going to throw this out, can we get seventy-five tree islands, twenty-five tree islands in each parking, in each parking facility? I'm just throwing that out there, and you, you, I'm sorry?
No, there, there's some surface park.
So what, surface parking, but in, take surface parking, like we've done before, and take out a parking space, because they're way above what we need, and make a tree island.
Right, no, I was just clarifying for my colleagues, they thought the parking was all indoors.
No, no, there is some sort of parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, in, in the outdoor.
As long as it doesn't tip the scale.
Right.
To the, like, so in certain areas like building D, I will say that I don't think it's going, I don't think you have that option.
I'm asking for you to look.
Right.
And come back and say, no, yes, maybe, or we can do it over here. Mr. Guarino. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Appel.
Good evening, everybody can hear me? Good, okay, Mr. Appel, thank you for your presentation, I have a number of questions. Either yourself and the traffic engineer, have you both looked at our complete streets ordinance, and that's part of the master plan? Do you know about our complete streets ordinance? Okay, I guess, I guess not, okay. Okay, basically, we look at all our developments, and all the members here were aware of complete streets where we make our projects to be as accessible and walkable for the residents and visitors in the township of West Orange. So we want to make sure that when you're doing your traffic flows, when you're doing your parking, when you're doing the walkability from the main buildings to the clubhouse, to such, and to the kennel, you know, are you taking into consideration the proper considerations of complete streets? And we can get you a copy of the complete streets, but it's also incorporated into the master plan. So that's something we'd like you to look at, and when you're doing your, your walkways and your traffic flows, the traffic engineer will look, everybody that we've asked, particularly all the major projects we've done in town, they've looked at our complete streets and they followed it to the T, and it's something that makes it a more attractive, makes it more walkable, safe for our residents, and safe for driver and driver traffic. So we'd appreciate.
We're going to get you a copy of that within the week.
We'll get you a copy of it, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recycling, how is recycling going to be handled within the development?
So, I, I did discuss that a little bit, is that inside each of the trash rooms on each building, each floor of each building, there's excess space, there will be bins with shelves and smaller bins or larger totter cans. Residents, they drop their trash in the compactor, they put their recycling in the, in the bins, the super collects the bins, brings it down to the garage, it's stored there, brought out for collection by the hauler.
Okay, so my other question, and it butts on that, in the trash chutes, do you have fire suppression?
I believe there's ventilation and, and there's suppression either in the chute or the room.
Okay, so I'm going to take that now downstairs to the garage level, is there fire suppression in the covered garage?
Yes, of course, and it's also three hour rated.
Okay, is it wet or dry?
Typically, dry.
Okay, dry. Secondly, unless the bicycle racks, we, you know, people are getting into bicycling and completely complete streets, will there be plans to put bicycle racks throughout the development?
We, we are showing bike racks inside the garages, I don't believe they're on the site. Okay, so I don't think, I don't think there's any on the site, although, as you're mentioning this, it probably, we probably should find a place near the clubhouse, but other than that, we find it better to put them under the garage in this climate.
Okay, no, that's very good, and another question is, it may sound crazy, but I didn't see anywhere or anywhere, is there a central laundry facility, or each unit has its own laundry?
Every, I, I did, I, I, I may have, I may or may not have mentioned that, is, is that every unit, every unit has their own washer and dryer, affordable and market.
Make sure to cover my base. No, that's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney.
Thank you, Chairman, you had used the word materially similar, and I was using the word indistinguishable, so I was pleased to hear that the affordable units are basically indistinguishable from all the other units, but I do have a question about that. The square footage of each unit, can you tell us what that is? The square footage, I'm asking the square footage or an average for the one bedroom?
You're talking about for the, for the, you're talking about your.
In general, in general. In general.
So, the, so the affordable units right now is the requirement for your settlement agreement is a one bedroom is six hundred and fifty square feet, we are providing seven hundred and thirty-eight square feet.
Okay.
A two bedroom is eight hundred and seventy-five square feet per the settlement agreement, we're providing eleven fifty square feet, and a three bedroom is eleven hundred and fifty square feet, and we are providing twelve twenty square feet. As far as the, the market units, if you can bear with me one moment. I'm going to give you a little bit of a range, and I'm going to give you a little bit of a range in here, and the reason I'm giving you a range is because with all the jukes and jogs of the building and balconies and, and cutbacks and everything, there's a lot of diversity in the size of the units, but on the market units, a one bedroom will be roughly between eight hundred and nine hundred square feet, a one bedroom plus den approximately one thousand to twelve hundred square feet, a three bedroom den is, I'm sorry, a two bedroom would be twelve hundred to thirteen hundred square feet, a two bedroom plus den would be fifteen hundred to seventeen fifty square feet, a three bedroom would be sixteen ninety to eighteen fifty square feet, and a three bedroom plus den seventeen thirty-five to twenty-two, twenty-five square feet. And while I gave you an exact range, there's a little bit of a range on the, on the affordables as, as well, but they're all hovering above that minimum requirement.
Thank you, do you know, or do you have what that moderate income and low income is?
I don't, I don't have those, those numbers, you're talking about the UHAC number, I don't have that.
Okay. So on view one here, I know you said it was an artistic rendering, it really looks like a real picture, because it looks like the sun is, the sun is up after a rainfall, so it really looks like these, this exists already, I think this was very aesthetic, and interesting aesthetic to show this, this type of picture. What immediately caught my attention, though, is the railing on the balconies. We heard about safety, that actually serves as a ladder for young children, and I don't know if you want to take that into consideration.
We will, we will look at that, we would, I, I will be more concerned on the, on the public spaces where, where I, I think it's more critical, but we will take that into, into account when we're fine tuning that.
Thank you, and similarly to, Mr. Appel asked a question about the, on that same, well, if you could zoom out again, yeah, where the garages are, so when I first saw this image, it did look very industrial to me, and I thought those were metal grates, so I was glad that you clarified that those are more lubered and they could add greenery to that.
They're almost like, they're, they're, they're actually made by the same companies that do the railings. So, they're, so they're considered their, their railings, and we have a lot of latitude, we can make them look like anything.
Okay, it did look industrial to me as well. Could you go to four point four C?
Oh, that's the, that's the section?
There you go, thank you. So this came up last night, we were talking about the slope, and can you tell us what that distance is from the, from the ridge line? I was asking what the, how many feet from the building to the ridge line?
So, that, that varies because of the way the building and the ridge line is situated. At some points, it, so I'm going by building D, at, at one corner, it starts off at twenty-five, then it goes to eighty-five, then to sixty-six, then to twenty-four, then to twenty-two, then up to forty-three, and then the closest spot is there's one corner that's a pinch point, and that's seven feet, and then it goes to thirty-two and then forty-one.
Because of all the different angles?
It's because of the way the building's situated and, and, but those, those are, those are the numbers. And those are, and those are kind of approximate, those are scaled off the, off a drawing.
And it is level here. In the same view here, are those trees existing, or is that proposed?
That's part of the existing, the existing trees in there.
Okay. And so if these are rental units, is the, is there a fee, a separate fee for parking? I understand in other municipalities, when there are units like this, the renters do not like to pay the extra rental fee, and they end up parking out on the street? Is that something that you can address? Is the parking included in the rent? That's the question, when it's separate, we're finding other municipalities complain about people not paying the extra fee and parking on the street.
Well, there's no, in this case, there's no street parking, but there, but there's a surface parking.
Yeah, I have an owner representative here who just, I think, he's swearing a minute to get addressed to the mayor's question, is that appropriate, Mr. Chairman? To be related to the specific question?
I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to call Mark Hoffman.
Mr. Hoffman, you want to get some microphones?
Good evening, Mr. Hoffman.
Mark Hoffman.
Start your last name, please.
Hoffman, H O F F M A N.
Thank you, sir.
I do.
Okay, thank you, Mark, you heard the mayor's question about parking?
Yeah, can we have it repeated? Mark Hoffman is for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, could you please identify yourself?
Sure, I'm a partner within the Garden Homes organization. I'm principally responsible for the design, development, construction of the project that's being presented this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mark, did you hear the mayor's question about whether residents would be required to pay for parking?
Yes.
Okay, could you please address that one question?
Sure, typically, they're not required to pay for parking, and residents are assigned spaces within the community. There are times, and I don't think that'll happen here, where individuals that don't have cars might not have to, they, they might get a decreased rent or, or something of that nature, but we won't have that issue here, because we really don't have street parking, and based on the location of the development, there, you know, that, no one's going to really have an opportunity to park anywhere but in a parking space near the building.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Mr. Now, one more question about, you referred to the amenities in the different buildings. Can you elaborate on that, is it amenity like a game room, is it a workspace area?
So you're talking about other than the clubhouse and building D?
Buildings themselves.
So typically, typically, that would be kind of a club room, so just a, a lounge or sitting area. It's only building D that will have its own gym.
Right. Okay. That's it, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Appel, I just want to talk about building D a little bit, the length of building D, I thought I saw some numbers like one piece was two hundred feet, then four hundred, then another two, is it about eight hundred feet long, roughly? Yeah, I think it's that one, yeah, the lower portion, I don't know if you can zoom in enough to see them, but it just seems like it's going to be difficult for emergency people to get around the building if they have to rescue somebody from the second floor balcony or, or something like that.
So, you have access along one entire side of the building, plus your two end caps.
Right.
So, you do have limited area to come around, you can see the, the buildings in there, the, the legs are long. On the elevation views, the buildings look longer because we didn't, we made crew elevation each side, so it makes the building look a long, a little bit longer than it really is, but at least it gives you an accurate pictorial representation of each piece of facade, but the code is, is interesting with, with fire safety, is that we are fully conforming in here and actually over conforming, but you actually get credits for additional street frontage, so I can build the building bigger by having excess street frontage, so, but if you imagine, let's say, a building, like an urban building that was on here, usually only has one side, rather than three sides, we have three sides exposed.
But there's no road on the, on the ends, is there?
Well, there's parking access, so that you can, you can, you, you can traverse around the building.
So a fire truck can get.
No, 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 not a fire.
That's what I was asking.
But you would never bring a fire truck next to a, next to a building.
Right, the fall zone, right, so how would they rescue somebody? They'd have to carry the ladder around to the back of the building.
Carry, carrying a ladder, but you got to remember that, that this is a building with an area of refuge, a sprinkler building with elevators, and so multiple stairs.
Okay. Even though it's in black and white, can you pull up the image that shows what these growth, these green walls will look like? Let me get zoom in a little bit, because I'm just curious. Because you, you don't want to block the louver with green, because then you'll block the fifty percent open space for the ventilation.
Right, so we have them shown on the back portion of this building, I believe, so you, you see these areas over here.
So that tall one, so the, the floor of the, where's the floor of the garage?
You have one, two, three, so the floor of the, of the garage here is, you, you have a portion that has two levels of garage in here, and that's why you have more, more exposure.
Oh, okay.
So if you go to the, if you go all the way to the end, that you see you have a garage level and then a lower garage level.
Oh, okay, so there is a ramp inside?
No, 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 it just has different access from the back, okay, okay.
Okay, okay.
They're not connected on the inside except vertically with stairs and elevator.
So the green. Tower, let's say next to the.
These elements over here. We use taller, um, no, they would be, you can have the ventilation um, directly behind them. But where you're in this uh, uh, below ground level, these are the areas that we're going to need to mechanically ventilate.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because we, we just couldn't get enough, uh, enough of the, uh, on the upper level, we can be conforming on the lower level.
And then, I don't know, I probably should ask this of Mr. Anderson. Are there sidewalks along any of the roads A, B, C, D?
I think um, I think there were sidewalks and, and I, I think uh, uh, Mr. Anderson um. Had described that there in one place that he hopped to the other side to align with uh, with other sidewalk. But um, there, there's sidewalks around uh, the whole community.
Okay, good. That was it. Thanks.
Council President Rutherford.
Senator Mr. Chair, I want to thank my colleagues for uh, asking uh, so many questions, some of which I already. Uh, had, so I won't have to ask them. So since we're on this um. Slide. The greenery for the louvers. So is, is the entire Walgreen or is it just the louvers? Does it grow up from the ground?
So, so imagine that you have um, planting that starts um, in the ground. And then there's a hole here. Or a recess in the um, the facade and you have a grid work of um, powder coated aluminum. And that the um, the plants.
Greenery will grow around.
And grow up into, in, into the uh, into the spaces. And it just creates a great, like almost a translucent green feel to the uh, facade. It's actually very attractive.
I, I, I understand. Um, so. Some of this may be redundant. I do apologize in advance. Um, but back to the tandem stalls. So, and, and I, I want to thank my colleague for asking the question, but I was a little unclear on the answer. So. For the tandem stalls for parking. Will the two stalls, the two uh, spots that are in tandem, will they be assigned to the same unit?
Single unit, correct.
Okay. Is there any material separating the stalls, even if it's not every single stall?
Um, there's not materials. There's, there's a structural column usually um, every three. Typically every three parking stalls. Other than that, they're right next to each other.
All right, um. You talked about E V. Spots, um, E V stalls in the garage and uh, I know there's some. Uh, on the exterior as well. I was a little unclear in your testimony was, is it a total of fifteen percent of this? How many, what is the percentage of the?
Five percent um, initially. So that's going to be, it's going to start off needing five percent of your overall parking count. And then an additional five percent phases in. As make ready stalls to phase in and another five percent after that.
So, so over a period of time, will they be phased in?
Think is it three, three years?
So each year you're going to do an additional five percent?
I, 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 I'm not a hundred percent. I think it's three years.
All right, um. In the building itself, are there any recyclable materials used? In the actual structure of the building?
So there's a, there's a lot of materials that will have recycled content. And there is a little bit of that discussion um, in the settlement agreement as well. So we're.
Yeah, I think they need you in the microphone. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, these mics only work when you're right on them.
So um. So the settlement agreement has, um, my understanding has some provisions for um, uh, green materials. So um, we um, will, where we can, um, utilize recycled content materials.
Uh, you said you weren't going to go through the, the uh, full certification process. Can you describe for me what you would expect your? Um, and by then I'm talking about the LEED certification or the other. Types of certification for, right. Can you describe for me what, uh, or is it possible for you to describe for, for us uh, what? Uh, this would be similar to, is it gold standard? Is it platinum? Is it uh, green? Is it, I, I, you know, I don't. Is, what is it possible to, based on what you're incorporating into the, into the building? Uh, and you gave plenty of testimony about that. Is it possible to estimate what it would be equivalent to?
I, I, I couldn't do that accurately because I don't want to talk, you know, wi- without being um, accurate on here. The only thing I can mention is what is in the settlement agreement is um, um, substantially above what code requires. And we will be compliant with that. I don't, I don't, I can't tell you where that scoring will. Um, will put you, whether it's certified, gold, platinum, silver, or, or what have you. Or what the equivalent is.
Um, you mentioned that the three buildings A, B, and C. Uh, or I mean, it was Mr. Anderson mentioned that buildings A, B, and C. Are, are built so that they could um. Hold solar panels.
Uh, um, that is, that is correct. We're, so we're designing the roof with additional dead load. So that um, solar panels can be incorporated. The, the, right now, it, there is not a plan. It's under consideration. So it's, it has not been decided, but we, what we will commit to is creating the additional uh, dead load. As well as any chase space required to make that work.
Any other renewable energy being used on site, cogging, heat pumps? Any, anything else, or is it just anticipating solar down the road?
Um, so um, other than the E V charging that, you know, that's uh, that's uh, on there. Um, the mechanical equipment is actually a higher efficiency than what is required by code. So um, that's one of the reasons why we had to go to the flat roof.
Ah, okay, um.
There's all, there was a, in, in the settlement agreement, there's, there's kind of a, a pretty long list of items. We have to do a light colored roof and. There's a, there's a, yeah, there's a, and I, I don't want to gloss over it very quickly, but um, you know, that could be a half hour discussion. Just, just on the, on the, the green.
I think the testimony was fine. Really, I'm looking at just how we pound the actual apartments and if there is. Uh, another source of energy aside from natural gas or electric.
Um, there, there is not an alternative fuel. And, and even if it was solar, I think you would still have the same um, types of furnaces and stuff like that. It wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be. Um, substituting that.
All right, I do have to jump around because some of these questions were already asked. Um, but. Following up on what uh, was just discussed with regard to. Uh, building D. And uh, emergency evacuation. So. If there is a need to evacuate someone from the rear of building D, which faces the steep slope. The, can you? Help me understand how we are addressing the need for the firefighters to get back there with heavy equipment.
So the firefighters would be able to um, like that building in itself has, I think. Four different stair towers with um, so there'll be stair towers, there will be stand pipes. They would um, come up to um, fight a fire. In addition, there will be an area of refuge. So that somebody who was in an area can go to an area of safe protection. Whether that will be in a large um, uh, area within a stair tower. Or will be a separate firewall separating that area to be an area of refuge. So, so that will be provide, you know, provided there. Um, typically what we understand is that um, firefighters need to go in to an upper floor. They can go in from one side of the building, go through. And go to the opposite side of the hallway, pull somebody and, and pull somebody out on the opposite side.
So you do not anticipate a need for firefighters to evacuate from the rear of the building?
Um, code does not require that.
But. So I understand that. Uh, and I'm not trying to be snarky. Um, you know, it's just. If there were an emergency and there are some things you can plan for and some things you can't, right? Um, and things you can plan for, you, you should. We know the slope is steep. I believe the testimony you gave a moment ago was that. On the slope. All of the trees will be undisturbed. Is that right?
Um, so um, on the, on the slope, there's an air, there's a line on the site plan and that is a uh, disturbance line. Clearing and then um, so everything down slope from that, my understanding is being um, left untouched.
So you mean at the top of the slope, there's a line that is.
It has to be cleared for the construction. So that's why there, there is going to be a perimeter around the building to allow construction. And firefighters will be able to traverse around the building. They would just need to drag hose or carry a ladder. It's not like they didn't have access, like an urban site. You, you don't only have access to one side of the building. This you will have access to four sides, but with a vehicle on two or three sides.
Right, so just so that I'm clear. If firefighters needed to access the rear of the building. They will be able to do so on foot, carrying heavy equipment. And they have enough space to get back there. Obviously, response times matter. Um, and that pinch point you're saying will be. No less than seven feet?
The pinch, that pinch point to the ridge line is uh, is seven feet. So those numbers that I was giving you was to that. To, was to that ridge, was to that um, line which was established by the um, by the town or one of the consultants. That was called the ridge line. I was giving you those dimensions because it's just an arbitrary line. You know, it's a, but that's, that's a, a line that everything had to be designed around.
And so that space back there is. Still sloped going up toward the top of the ridge?
Uh, it goes up and down. Um, it, it follows because whatever the natural topography. So once we clear the building, it's not a, it's not like on the front of the building, that's a straight line. The back of the building, it's going to go up and down and follow the normal.
Yeah, so that's what I anticipated. I, I am um, a little concerned about that. I don't know how to capture that in the condition. I don't know if we can capture that in the condition. But my concern, sir, is that if there is a need for firefighters to access the rear of the building. You have um, a bottleneck at that corner of, of building D, which has been described as seven feet from the building to the ridge line. We have an uneven surface. We have a very long building. And it, it looks to me as a layman, I'm not a firefighter, never have been. It looks to me like that's going to take a considerable amount of time to get back there safely, get set up safely and then. Um, handle whatever the emergency may be.
So I'm going to pose a suggestion in here and this is to the, the uh, Mr. Anderson is. Can we create alongside the building just to um, have a smoother transition grade wise? Um, on the ridge side or would, are, are we getting into areas that would um? Uh. Create disturbances that would cause other issues? And that would be the. The, the, the question of whether, if there's, as long as there's adequate space.
The spaces graded behind the building is already graded in a smooth, continuous way. It might change in slope. Uh, but the one thing that is relevant here is uh, if you go back to the section that you've had showing. Uh, where the building was with the trees, you can see you're at the top of the hill. So we built just short of the top of the hill. Then there still is the top of the hill, which is generally very level. And then it starts going back down. Okay, so if you look at the, the, the exhibit. That Larry will bring up here. You have it there somewhere. Well, you know all the numbers.
Either, either, either one.
So, so.
Go, go back one, go back that.
Yes, parallel to the back of the building. So, so if you're talking about firefighters, we have anywhere between seven at one discrete point. Where within thirty feet, it's, it's like thirty feet of, of, of level area. Now look at the, the, the slope of that area immediately behind the building. That's not a steep slope. Farther to the right is where the steep slope actually occurs. You're at the top of the hill. Right at the top where it gets level. You go up over a hill with your car and you get to the top and all of a sudden you go back down the other side. This is at the top part.
So, I, I fully understand that. My concern is, so this is a, this is a hillside, right? You're not planning on sidewalks or pavers or some other uh. Thumb or smooth surface back there. It is um, it would be great if it was on a nice, hot, sunny day and the ground is great and. And there are no issues, but if it's in the middle of winter and it's snow, if it's in a rainy day or if it's been raining. Uh, and firefighters have to get back there. They're on uneven, as, as I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, they're on uneven ground. They are on a slope, even though it's sloping toward the building. It may not be a steep slope, but it is a slope. Um, and it's a long building, so they've got to park at one end or the other. And then go all the way around the building to get to the back, should that happen. That to me seems like something we should plan. Better for.
Uh, I, I, I just. Yeah, that's, it gets back to the code issue and what, how the fire chief. Who we're waiting for him there, the fire.
Anderson.
District, I'm sorry, waiting for the fire uh, official to come back from vacation before we can speak with him. About how we would uh, go about operating here and see if he has any concerns. But as Larry indicated, we are exceeding the code requirement for access to the sides of the building. And that's, you know. That's, you know, that's uh, the paramount thing here, so. Um, but that, that explains the slope, so you get a better picture of the top of the hill.
Well, I, I understand, I, I, I understand that the code is the code as it is now and I know that the code as it is now will govern. Um, with regard to this particular project. But if we are aware at this point of a flaw or a concern. And not a single tree has been taken down, nothing has been built. Um, if we can address it now, I think we should. And the last thing that I would want as an elected official is to amuse this planning board. Is to have had this conversation in public and five years from now, that exact thing happens. Uh, and nothing was done. So that is my concern. It is um. It is one of several questions, but that is something that I would have to have addressed satisfactorily. Uh, before I would be comfortable moving forward. Um, Mr. Chair, I don't know how you capture that or Mrs. McGovern, I don't know how to capture that. Um, but that is waiting.
We're going to wait for comment. Mr. Plucker.
Yeah, I just want to confirm and Mr. Anderson alluded, alluded to it. A member of our team did attempt to reach the fire chief. He is away on vacation. And we definitely will be having this conversation with him. We would be happy to revisit it after.
Thank you. So we will revisit this once we have the information from the fire chief. Who will hear the questions that have been asked and will respond to them.
Much obliged. Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Um. And Mr. Appel, sorry, I forgot for a second. Um, all right, accessibility. It, it seems like you've done a great job making all of the buildings accessible. I have a question about um. Uh, folks that are mobility challenged, getting around the site. Uh, or getting offsite. Um, and, and that question really, I, I know that there are some sidewalks. Mr. Anderson testified to that. Uh, yesterday and I believe those sidewalks do connect with Warner. Um, are we eighty, uh, A F H A or ADA compliant with regard to the slope uh, for those that are in which years?
I, I can only talk about um, kind of the building and the surrounding of.
I should have asked that to Mr. Anderson yesterday. Uh, I'll come back to him later on. You don't have to get out of your chair again. Just don't go anywhere yet. Um, all right. The coal units, and again, I've, I've taken notes through your thing, so I'm going to jump around a little bit. The affordable units. Um, it looked to me and I, and I, I looked quickly that um. Most of them, if not all of them, were on the uh, shorter side of the building. In other words, the hallway is not equidistant.
That is correct.
All right, and uh, you just gave some testimony regarding um. Square footage. Now, there was a question asked earlier, followed up by our mayor. Um, with regard to uh, the affordable units in comparison to the market rate units. And the original answer provided to Mr. Cardoza was that they would be materially similar. And the mayor uh, introduced a word called indistinguishable. So are they materially similar or indistinguishable?
So I would say indistinguishable, like the, the outside from the door. So from the, you look at the building and, and the door. But um, inside is that the units are a little smaller. The kitchens can be a little bit different. I can't really talk about the um, whether it's going to be the exact same appliances and, and packages in there. But um, all of, all of these were designed to have full heating and cooling systems. Um, their own washer and dryer, um, closet, storage, all the things have the same windows and, and similar, similar features. So um, but I, I can't talk about those other items.
So I think with regards to the fit and finish, um, I, I, I would like to, I would like the affordable units to be indistinguishable. Um, or materially, uh, I would like to know if they are indistinguishable or materially similar to the market rate units. Um, or materially, uh, I would like to know if they are indistinguishable or materially similar to the market rate units.
Talking about now with um finishes and.
Yeah, so the last, and 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 listen, I'm not a, I don't pretend to be a professional or an expert in this stuff. I'm I'm not. Uh, but the last uh. Uh, project that we had uh that incorporated these kinds of units that I was a part of. Um, I do believe, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, that we required them to to be the same. And the developer actually, uh, at least. What I recall off my memory, I think they were the same. I think that was something that we want.
Terminology we used was materially similar based on supply chain. So if you couldn't get an appliance A. Uh, all the units, whether they were a market rate or affordable, would get appliance B. So you wouldn't distinguish between the different units in those appliances. So you don't have to give everybody the same appliance. But you have to give all the units at that time the same appliance. So that was, that's what we considered materially similar based on supply chain.
If I understand that correctly, and again, I'm going wrong. And so thank you for the clarification.
So the units could be smaller, the units could have other certain things that uh when you, that the affordable unit. Would may not have, that the market rate unit would have, but the appliances will be materially similar based on supply chain.
And I think I went to um to to other things as well, not just appliances. I mean, we didn't want to have, you know, um uh. Branded countertops in market rate units and, uh, you know, something substandard in an affordable unit.
Um, so so this is something I I would, I I need to review with ownership and and. Have a clear understanding of of those uh. Oh, um, I I have to uh review that with ownership because I, it's something that was not reviewed and discussed prior.
Thank you, Mr. Appel. Um. You showed us a leasing office in the clubhouse, I believe.
Yes.
So when the project is done and fully leased up, what will become of the leasing office?
It re- it remains, um, so there's a large enough community where um there is always going to be a need for. Um, uh, um. Potential renters to um look at this. So um we find for communities that are larger, this is the right way to do it.
Um, okay, and we mentioned windows a moment ago. Um. If you go back, I think it was the first or the second slide, um, there was an exterior presentation. Uh, the next, next one, I think, that one. So you show some birds in the upper right.
That they come with the site. Uh, that that is, that is, that is, that is a, an artistic expression.
Uh, the birds will be materially.
Are they materially similar? I, my hat's off to the.
They 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 fly equally over the affordable units and the market units.
Perfect. My hat's off to the artist. The question is, um, you know, they're there, they're a reminder that you are in the middle of woods. Uh, this development. Um, and we have, I personally experienced it, and I'm sure others have. Uh, birds flying into windows. Uh, is there any technology on any of these large windows to help prevent or mitigate that risk?
Uh, usually when you have um uh window shades and and stuff like that is that. My understanding is those are helpful with that. But I I don't, I don't have.
Like technology or.
Have not, have not looked at that.
Okay. Um. All right, let's go back to the rooftop uh deck. I think that's on building D. Yesterday, Mr. uh Anderson gave some testimony with regard to attempted balloon tests. Uh, for sidelines. And I think you today gave some testimony um stating that, well, is there a view of New York City from this property?
So I, my, my understanding um toward toward New York, I don't know that you will see. Um, my understanding from what we've seen with the tree line is that upper floor will. Will have some kind of peek through places. So not every place is going to give you a straight line, but you'll have some pockets where there. Are thinner and and um and exposure. So um, that's my understanding. That's what we were designing. To accommodate and um and take advantage of.
So so there is a portion of the building that will be visible above the tree line? Is that, is that on, is?
From from where? You would have, you, not, not, not from those surrounding locations because that exhibit was showing. That that, so let me go to. When you look at the actual view, taking advantage of the topography, you see that. Um, even if this was above, you're, you're not going to be able to see. If you can zoom back out, please.
Is that building D?
That's building D right there. So you can see that that sightline is through. So many hundreds of feet of trees. Now, is there a remote top like up by the manor where you may see a little piece of the building poking up? Possibly.
So that that is facing east is what you're saying? Like to the right is east?
Right is facing east, correct?
So, you know, we're on, that that's on Second Mountain, am I right? Or is that at First Mountain? I know there are two mountains. This is on one of them. That's at the top of one. Right?
So the the other one is going to be South Mountain Reservation is the is the second mountain. I I if if I'm understanding what you're saying.
Right, and it may not be called it, but whatever it's called, that's what it is, right? Are you going to be able to see this building? Will it extend above the tree? Those trees are not, those are just for.
I I couldn't, I couldn't tell you from where exactly you can get that viewpoint. I can just say that the exercise doing these um site studies was to show that. Um, the adjoining residents are not in a vantage point to be, have this um. Uh, the, you know, there's a tremendous amount of distance and topography that um that creates. Um, uh, privacy and buffering between those homes and the uh, uh, and the proposed structures.
So my concern with that is not just that you could see it. I don't know that that would be a bad thing. I imagine the building's going to look nice. Um. But it's about light pollution, and you talked about the downward facing lights in the decks. But on building D, um, what is the lighting on the deck?
Um, the um testimony I gave earlier is that we were proposing that to be predominantly baller type lighting. That's what baller lighting is where you have um low level lighting. So that instead of a a light fixture up high shining down, it's a low uh low light that broadcasts to the side. So we're looking at low lights and walls, planters and and ballard rather than high lighting.
Got it.
And that's, and that was in in regard just to being more sensitive to that.
All right, now, have you considered in your public spaces where uh? How many garbage cans you're going to have around the clubhouse, the dog kennel, the dog park?
Have have not gotten into that level of detail.
Okay, but there will be public trash cans. Uh, in those public areas?
I think that's a wonderful idea, and I think that we should include some of these. I think it's, and and one of the things that we didn't, we did not, uh. Um, we did not think um through, we located bike, bike racks below the buildings, but not at the clubhouse. And I think people should be encouraged to bike to the clubhouse.
Um, on that note, are you going to have bike lanes?
Um. I don't, I don't believe there was anything proposed as a bike lane.
Wide enough to incorporate a bike lane?
Not currently.
All right, and then my last question. Uh, back to the COA units. Um, in the affordable units, the balcony is, and you can go to the slide. I forgot which slide it was. I didn't write it down. Forgive me. Um, and the COA units, the balcony is accessed only through the bedroom. And the market rate units, the balcony is accessed through the living room. Is there, what's the thinking behind that?
Uh, I'm not sure if that's.
Accurate.
Case for everything.
Okay.
Let me uh, give, give me, give me a moment, please.
Sure. So it's slide.
So I'm, I'm, I'm looking at P B dash four.
Seven.
Point seven.
Yes.
So. So four point seven.
One bedroom.
We're showing. So um, living room. So the bal- the balcony is off the bedroom and this is in, is in uh, on the one bedroom, it's off the uh, the bedroom.
Right.
And that was to allow the living room to be larger. That was why we we had done that. We thought it was a better trade off.
Okay.
And then on the uh two bedroom COA, it is off the living room. And on three bedroom COA, it's also off the living room. So.
So my notes weren't clear, but it, on the one.
But you're, you're correct on, 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 on that, on that one.
And so the thinking was to give a larger living room?
Um, that, that was why we had placed it over there. Because uh, we, we could mirror the unit, so we keep the balcony in the same place. But now you're going to have a smaller living room, and we thought that was more valuable for the resident.
Uh, I, that's a a choice. I just wanted to understand the thinking behind it. Uh, I will say that I I am a little disappointed with the um. The size, the square footage difference between the affordable and the market rate units. Um, that is uh, that is disappointing. Um, what, what we, uh, what I would like to see, I won't speak for anyone else. Um, are these, the affordable units to be. Um. I won't use the word indistinguishable, that's already been refuted or pushed back against, but substantially or more substantially similar to. The market rate units. Um, at the lower end, you know, we're looking at. About a twenty percent difference uh between a. Affordable unit and a, and a market rate unit, uh, with the affordable unit being much smaller. Um. You know, it's not as bad in the two bedroom. Uh, but it is as, it is, it is a big difference in the three bedroom.
So what you have, what you have to look at in here is um. Is that on the short side of the building, you have both market and. Um, affordable units. So um, you have a one bedroom over here. Um, this happens to be a two bed. So you have, here's a one bedroom COA. And a one bedroom market. You can see, you can, you shouldn't compare the one bedroom COA to the one bedroom plus den across the hall, that there's a big difference. But you can see the, the one bedroom and the one bedroom COA are really quite similar size wise. Just that there happened to be other larger one bedrooms available also. So there are small one bedroom market units also.
Smaller, correct. Um, the numbers you gave were eight hundred to nine hundred square feet. Um, I don't know what that block is, that's missing out of the one bedroom and two bedroom COA.
That, that, those are placeholders for both storage room as well as mechanical closets.
So now, yeah, I mean, so we, not to belabor the point. However, we got here, uh, you know, seven thirty eight on average versus eight fifty on average, right? Eight hundred to nine hundred, uh, eleven fifty.
But you're comparing um larger one bedrooms and smaller one bedrooms.
Averages. If if you, you're, you're saying the affordable average was of, was seven thirty eight, or the affordable was seven thirty eight. The average of a market rate one bedroom is eight hundred to nine hundred. I mean, the, the range is eight hundred to nine hundred. Their average would be eight fifty, just. Looking at that, at that number, at those two numbers. So you're looking at eight hundred and fifty square feet versus seven hundred thirty eight. That's a hundred and twelve square feet difference. That's almost a twenty percent difference in size. That, that's, that's substantial to me. Now, it's not as big of a difference on the two bedroom. Two bedroom is eleven fifty on average, you know, market rate is twelve hundred to thirteen hundred square feet, so just say twelve fifty. It's a hundred and fifty, um, it's a hundred square foot difference. It's not a meaningful difference, it's less than ten percent. Um, but when you go to the three bedroom, it is, it is now a large percentage, twelve twenties, the one we gave. Sixteen ninety to eighteen fifty is the range, which would put you at about seventeen twenty. It's a five hundred square foot difference, which is almost a, it's about a forty percent difference.
Right, and and the, the reason being is that if you pan to the side to either to the left. Or the right.
Into the microphone.
Oh, if you, so um, all of the market three bedroom, the only place we're putting them are these end caps. So they were just um, um, done to stack these large units. And we've, we've actually set back these units so that the um units on the um lower floors are larger. So if you can look at a, uh, I'm going to go to an upper floor, you can see. How, you see, here's the, the profile of the unit below, they're set back. So that, that was to get an architectural expression, not, you know, so you have some of these. Three bedrooms that are larger, but then they get smaller to accommodate, you know, the, the stepping of the building.
Well, even if you use the smallest three bedroom, you're looking at sixteen ninety uh square feet versus twelve twenty. Uh, which is a four hundred seventy square foot difference, which is still about thirty percent.
So we, we, we will, we will look at the, at the COA. Uh, COA unit sizes.
Right, and and you know, that is just a philosophical approach to how we uh treat um. Renters who would fall into that affordable category. Um, and making it as difficult as possible to distinguish between an affordable unit and. Uh, a market rate unit. It's not just about the door. Uh, because with the three bedroom in particular, we would expect there to be children. And uh, what, what I would hate to see is uh children going from one unit to another. Um, and being able to distinguish that this is the affordable unit. Um, which would, you know, could expose kids to that type of bullying. You know, kids can be cruel sometimes. So that, that's the thinking, that's the philosophy, and if we can address it before anyone, I would, I would appreciate it. Those are my questions and my thoughts. Uh, and that does it for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I'd like to go back to building D. Um. Mr. Anderson couldn't tell us yesterday exactly how far the backside of the building is from the ridge line. Can you tell us?
We, we already, I, I saw that you already did.
Well, because there's some out pocketings from the back of building D. I want to know from those out pocketings, if we pick up, put up the picture again. You can look at that where people can walk out from the backside of the building. That's what it looked like.
So um, coming from the top of the building, um, so we scaled off a couple of dimensions along from the. Top corner um of the uh, of the building, so I'm kind of starting um. Back over up. Um, if you can keep, um, don't, please don't zoom in.
Well, on the first floor where you can walk out, it was, you had one of the diagrams.
So, okay, so let me go back. To you. So, so we can come out over um from this corner, starting over here. About twenty five feet to the ridge. Uh, then it's going to, as you come around the side of the building, it will go up to about eighty five feet. Then to about sixty six feet. And then to about twenty four feet.
So when you come right over here, is that a walkout?
About twenty four feet to the uh.
What, what is that some, is that a path for people to walk out and sit on or?
Can you zoom in over, over there? We, we, we created a placeholder. Um, can you zoom in on this area here? So we've created an outdoor space behind the gym over here. So.
Far is that from the ridge line?
Uh, if this is about twenty feet uh deep, you are probably. Uh, about maybe anywhere between four and six feet um from the ridge line.
Okay.
And then as you uh, you continue around the building, it, it um goes back up to about forty three feet. And then at this corner, that's the tightest pinch point, which is about seven feet to the ridge. And then opens up to thirty two. And then opens up to thirty two and about forty feet over here. And that's a product of the the building moves. And the ridge line is not a straight line. It's all curved all over the place.
Now, is there gonna be pavement back there, trees? Because that's the area where we heard testimony firefighters may drag a hose. Or. Medics may drag a stretcher.
I don't, I don't believe there's landscaping along the the base of the building at the rear. Yeah, so I I think I think it's 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 open.
The green wall is in spots. Go go to the back of the building, Elise. That's what we're talking about, right?
Um, no, we were, we were, we were not looking at this building.
They didn't talk about this part of the building. They talked about louvers in the front of the.
Oh, the one where it undulates down. That's not D. That's not the back of D.
No, this was uh, this was, this was.
That's the back of D there?
This is the building that we were.
That's the gym, that gym patio doesn't face the driveway. That faces the.
No, no, this is, thi- this is building A.
Now, I was talking about building D. Where you're you're getting close to the ridge line is a gym patio. And I asked, how far was that from the ridge line? It's four feet.
It's less because it's like a thirty foot deep patio. So it's right up to the edge. And that's the, where to go. That's, so where is it? So down here on the left? No, that's the front. Is that the?
This is the.
Front, right?
Uh, it is. This side.
East, that's east. Oh, okay. So then down here, yeah, down there, that's the patio.
Correct. That's the patio right here. Jim beyond. This was not the elevation that we were putting the green wall.
And is the term ridge line here being used to mean the actual crest of the hill or the do not build past this?
It is. When I, whenever we use the term ridge line, it's that line that was established um, by the town.
That's what I thought. Do do we know the distance to the actual top of the hill?
I I I don't, I don't, I couldn't correlate like where the topo lines. Relate to that.
But it's not the case that we're that we're six feet from the top of the hill at any point.
No, the 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 only thing that that I can tell you with, um, like this is taken from all of the. Actual grades that the, when we did these sections. So you can kind of see how um. You know, where all of this kind of. You know, you have this kind of flat spot and it doesn't get really steep till you're all the way back over here.
Depends on where you take the slopes.
Yeah, right, correct.
It would be useful to know, it would be useful to know the actual closest distance to. The point where it becomes a problem, whether that's the top of the hill or probably both, both the top of the hill. And where the slope gets beyond a certain percentage of slope. It's important to know how far it is from the actual line on the plans too. That six feet number is not unimportant. But I would want to know how many feet we are from the top and from at whatever point the slope becomes technically steep.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. So at that pinch point where it's seven feet. There uh, your slope ordinance, which doesn't apply.
I'm trying. Right, understand that, I understand it doesn't apply, but I'll hold it up if you need to. I understand it doesn't apply, but I like that.
Your slope ordinance applies, it starts regulating slopes at ten percent. Okay, the ten percent point starts about twenty feet off of that corner.
From the tightest, from the tightest point. Thank you.
Will there be wayfaring signs throughout the complex? Go this way, go that way, building A, building B, park here.
Um, no, not, oh, I'm sorry, not part of the application now, but my understanding is that there. Um, would be and should be uh, wayfaring sign.
Will you consider using solar powered wayfaring signs?
I think that could be a reasonable. Solution.
And the birds will talk about another.
Couple follow up questions.
Mr. Hess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have uh, Mr. Appel, I have two questions for him. The uh, first is uh, you spoke about the visitor, the parking spaces for building D. And that they would be assigned. Then you're gonna have the visitor spaces. Are the visitor spaces gonna be marked for visitors? Or are they also open to other tenants? Who maybe wanna have a second vehicle?
What it, what is proposed right now is that you have um, assigned stalls for each unit. And in addition to the sign stalls for each unit, the remainder of the stalls um, are shared. And they they um, will accommodate the point five stalls per um, unit. For for visitors, but they would not be labeled specifically visitor only. They would just be non labeled. So you'd have an assigned stall or uh, an unlabeled stall.
But are there excess spaces above the point five per unit? But my question is, if if they're not labeled for visitors. Then you could potentially have tenants who have a second vehicle that don't have an assigned space. That could be using the unassigned parking and taking away spaces that would be there for visitors. So my question is. How do you plan to address that?
Uh, nor normally, this is the process that that we do. Um, we don't um, just label them specifically. As visitor only spaces. Um, it tends to work well is that um, um, ownership. Um, you know, if they find a problem, they address a problem, but usually it works out well.
And are are any assigned spaces proposed in the other buildings?
Yes, all, um, so in building A, B, and C, all of the garage spaces will be assigned.
Okay.
Um, it's only D that there's limited surface stalls, so that um, has some interior um, unassigned stalls.
Are there excess garage spaces in the other buildings other than D?
When you say excess.
Well, if you're. Um, if you're assigning one space per unit. Then are there more than one space per unit in the garage?
I I believe, I believe so.
Okay.
Um, and some, you know, some of, some um, units will be assigned to tandem stall and some units would be assigned to single stall.
Okay. And then all the spaces on the surface will then, they'll be open for visitors?
You know, visitors, guests, or um, possibly, you know, residents that are not parking, you know, inside. They 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 would. They're, they're just open for anybody.
Okay. Um, second question is, the the plans show that you have one bedroom. With dens and two bedroom units with dens.
I'm sorry, can you read that? I can't, I can't hear. There's.
Okay, the uh, the plan show that you you're proposing one bedroom units with dens. And also two bedroom units with dens. What provisions have you incorporated into design to keep the dens from being converted to bedrooms?
Um, in this particular case, we are overparked. So the question is, I don't know whether a restriction is needed or valid. Usually, the reason you do it is because you don't have enough parking. We have fast parking right now. So I don't, I don't know whether it's necessary to uh, restrict that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mr. Hazel.
I can start off with the last response. You said that.
Mr. Hazel, speak up a little bit more, please. Thank you.
You said that usually you would not restrict that. Den area. Based on the availability of parking, that would be the one thing that would uh, would sort of require you to restrict that. But based on the uh, exchange you had, Council President, before in terms of the unit sizes, wouldn't uh. Two bedroom that with a den that became a three bedroom, would that not? Uh, compromise the space further?
I'm not, I'm not, I don't understand what the question is.
You're saying that the, in in terms of uh, what Mr. Hess was mentioning about the dens, what is to stop. Someone taking a two bedroom with a den and turning it into a three bedroom, putting a wall up or what have you to turn that den into a third bedroom.
Well, they, I I don't know whether they would be permitted to do construction on a, on a unit, but if some, if somebody were to have. Let's say, a uh, um, a a guest that was going to stay there overnight. Is, would that be a restriction? I I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if that's, that's necessary to make. In in some ordinances, the bedroom count is limited. Or you're limited by parking. In this particular case, we don't have a limitation on here. We're suggesting the dens not to be bedrooms. Where we've designed them to be um, extra spaces like for a home office or um, a dining space or a hobby room or something like that. But not, not a bedroom, but I I don't know whether restriction is necessary.
Yeah, no, I I only responded, I only picked up on that because of the. What you'd said, the limitation was based on availability of parking and that that was, uh, other question. The uh. The 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 nonconforming situation you have that is triggering the variance. Um, did you, did I hear you say that there was some visual that you had that showed where that fifty percent? Uh, uh, maximum was, you know, you've gone over that fifty percent maximum, um, with buildings and what areas?
I I don't have a specific visual, but we went through and did calculations for um, for all of this and. Um, that. Um, we felt that it was a better design solution um, to um, request that relief. Rather than try to build walls and alter grading in an awkward manner. Um, it's.
If if I may, uh, Mr. Chair, I I would recommend that because this is the nonconformant variant condition. For which a variance would uh, be required, that some sort of a graphic be provided showing the extent to which that is. Um, because when I look at the uh, the uh, elevations and so some areas there, it's fairly significant. And I think that someone did ask about if there is a uh, sidewalk adjacent to the buildings. And in many buildings that do have this situation, they would not have this on the, the 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 louvers and so on, the front facade. So. Kind of keeps the front facade looking like a front facade. But in this case, because of the undulating uh, nature of the site, it's difficult to do that. Last question is the uh. Apartment in the clubhouse that is going to be the um. Model apartment. Is there any intent, do you have, is there any intent to have any uh? For want of a better way of putting this service quarters or service uh, uh, habitation for?
No, no, and that, if that needs to be a restriction, that certainly may bind it. Have that, that it will will not be a occupied unit. It's only for uh. Uh, sales, leasing and marketing purposes.
So, Chair, I would recommend that that be included.
Be restricted, yes.
Mr. Chair. Can I?
Council President Rutherford.
Uh, would like to follow back up on the parking. So it's it's my understanding that um, there are no restrictions with regard to usage of the den. As a a bedroom. Um, and there i- there are no assigned visitor parking, so the visitor spots could be used. By uh, residents and there is an additional fee for the parking. I think the combination of those three things is.
Who 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 represented that there was an additional?
So the parking is included with the rent? Okay, so I misunderstood. Sorry. I'm present, hey, relax, take a deep breath. Right? I think everybody in here is human. So, so there is, you, there, the, the parking is included in the rent.
That's, that's, that's what I, I think, Mr.
And so those tandem spots, those, so if you have a two bedroom or three bedroom, you will get two spots included with your rent. Is that right? Yes?
I'm sorry, those would be the normal connections for uh, for the tandem stalls.
I still think that there's some. Concern and it's not that it happens in other municipalities. It it happens here. We have a. A property in town where folks don't pay for parking, they park on the street. If there are additional cars, instead of paying the additional fee, and if those visitor spots are not clearly marked or restricted. Uh, residents may choose to park in those visitor spots, which could cause additional um, you know, issues for folks that are visiting. Force them to park on the street or or park far away. Um, which, you know, isn't ideal. So if that could be addressed, I I think it should be addressed beforehand. And that's an easy fix, just designate a certain number of spots as visitor parking spots.
Um, we we will uh, look at that with the site engineer.
Thank you. I I, yeah, I think that's the, I think we are going to end up with enforcement issues and other issues. If um, if if the parking is not better regulated.
Thank you, Council President.
Can you, for next time, can you calculate the. Based on the number of parking spaces you have and based on a den being a bedroom. Figure out if you still meet RSIS, if every den was considered a bedroom. So one with a den is a two, a one only is a one, a two with a den is a three, a three with a den, you know what I mean? Do the math. Maybe you're close.
Yeah, we have, we haven't, we haven't done that in my end.
And that is not an issue, right, Mr. Hazel? If they met that number. But if then you do, then you're gonna have to do some restrictions. I mean, do you have archways and? In your dens? Usually that's like, or it ends up being interior.
It's not a door, it's just an open.
Right, and is it an interior area? So you don't have lights and nobody wants to sleep in a room like that or?
They're usually interior. They're, they're not well suited to bedrooms.
Right, they're too short to put a bed in maybe or something.
I I didn't know whether there there's, there was no, nothing either ordinance wise or parking reason. That I thought to restrict it, so I didn't uh, it didn't, didn't seem like a restriction.
I mean, I, I, I do.
Mr. Alper.
I do think we want to find a way to discourage, reduce and and not have dens used as bedrooms. I think if if dens are used as bedrooms at all commonly. Then every two bedroom plus a den is really a three bedroom, every three bedroom plus a den is then a four bedroom, which.
They're just not, they're just, most of them are windowless and they're just not well suited to be a bedroom. Um, um, other than something, you know, temporary interim for an overnight guest or something like that.
Too close to the condition or?
Mr. Appel, you uh, testified that you're not considering four bedrooms at the moment. Does that mean you're not considering four bedrooms or at the moment? I wanna be clear about what we're talking about.
So so what what you're saying is that a a a three bedroom plus den?
Well, no, you you said, somebody asked, are you considering four bedrooms? You said, no, at this time, we're not considering four bedrooms.
There is, there's no, there's no, not on the plans. It was not.
It will be no four bedrooms. Okay, so we can put that in. That's good. Thank you. Uh, now the clubhouse, the club, you will have four hundred and sixty nine units. Will the clubhouse pool and amenities be large enough to pop, to use, used by the population in this complex?
Uh, usually what we find is in most cases, um, these spaces are way underutilized and that's the the problem. We feel it's right sized for for this. Well, we, it's a, it's a large clubhouse, but we, we feel we have the right uh, spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I have a few questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Catoza.
Thank you. Following up, um, just the mention of bike racks, I just want to be sure, uh, when you come back to us that you've. Had a chance to really look at bike racks, uh, while a pool may be underutilized. Uh, you know, we have a building in town, six hundred plus units, six hundred thirty four, I believe. Uh, the bike storage. Is just in one room and it's insufficient. I think with this uh, you know, site, you're gonna have a. My apology. Edison lost, I I'm I'm misstating, I get the, the broad, three hundred, thank you. Well, the, either way, the bike storage is insufficient. What you're gonna get with this site is, you know, it's, it's. In the woods, right? And uh, you're gonna have people, you have these long, um. What should I say? Roads. I would expect people wanna ride their bikes. I mean, we had the question about uh, possibly bike lanes, but. Okay. My apologies. I would just say, you know, when you have a chance, like really look at the, at the bike storage, make sure that's efficient.
We will relook at that.
Okay. Um, the que- a question about the the windows, are those all fixed? Is there no opportunity for, what's, what's the possibility of airflow with? If people wanna crack a windows?
We're, we're, we're assuming that the uh, units will have operable windows.
Okay. You mentioned, uh, you know, amenities and and I know a lot of this is. you mentioned, uh, you know, amenities and, and I know a lot of this is still in the works, but, um, you mentioned, you said for the most part, a lot of these amenity spaces would be lounges and I saw that they were, you know, kind of packed into corners and I'm just hoping that there'll be some imagination when it comes to, uh, amenity spaces, theater rooms, music rooms.
Um, are you, are you talking about in the apartments or you're talking?
Yeah, in the apartment building.
So the apartment buildings, A, B, and C will not have those type of spaces.
Okay, so D.
D, D will and the clubhouse will have those shared amenities.
Okay.
Um, so the idea in here was rather than have lots of spaces in the buildings, D has extra amenities.
You had about two for floor and D?
But, but A, A, B, and C, um, had just small lounges. And then they, you know, the clubhouse is the community amenity and this is a large building. It's, it's, it's got a lot of really neat, special spaces.
And you said with the clubhouse, you were still working out the specific uses, especially with the children's areas?
Well, we, we have, we have a bunch of spaces that are well programmed in here. But what I was mentioning is that this, this is all in flux because it responds to what the needs are of the residents. And so some of these spaces may get repurposed over time.
Okay. The, and you, you have no plans. You have a back patio, right? And we, we spoke about that for building the back patio. Did you say that was enclosed?
You're going about in the, you're talking about the club, you're the, in the clubhouse?
Building D, all leading to the ridge line.
Oh, that back patio is, um, that the, you're talking about, um, off the, off the gym?
Yes.
Um, that's not enclosed.
No.
That's, that's, that's open.
All right. And so we're, when, I guess, because we also, we asked questions about the emergency services being able to get to the back. We asked questions about, you know, potential, uh, paving. Are we imagining that people aren't just going to use, you know, the space between the, um, ridge line and the deer fence is just their backyard and move about there?
I mean, I, I, I think people can.
Yeah.
Walk back there, but there, but, um, there are so many other well-defined places to be. I, I would think there's a lot of nicer and better program spaces for them to go to.
Okay. You have no plans for any outdoor grills anywhere on the facility, do you?
Um, the, these could be placed, there could be, um, outdoor grills. There are special grills that, um, are permitted um, on a, uh, let's say on a, uh, on an outdoor terrace, not individual, but a, a common terrace as well as, um, uh, possibly at the clubhouse, there may be an, uh, a, a grilling area that's, uh, that's included as well.
And likely not the sky terrace in building, on building D?
Um, it probably wouldn't be up there. It would probably be on, there's a, there's a, the terrace between the two buildings is probably the more appropriate place for that. But, um, I think either, either place that, um, could accommodate, they have special grills that are, um, non-flared grills that are, um, acceptable to put onto, uh, public, you know, terraces like that.
So something you're considering or not considering?
I, 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 I think that would be a, a, a reasonable thing as a passive.
No, just if, if you are, I would just want it included when you, when you come back. That, that's all, Mr.
Thank you. One other question. Vice Chairman, Marino.
Last que- last question. Uh, I have a quick question about the clubhouse and the facilities and stuff like that. Will the clubhouse, the tennis courts and the pool, will it be accessible to West Essex Highlands residents one and two? Or it's just gonna be for the apartment residents?
This is, this is just for this community.
It's just for the rent, the rental units?
Correct. That's a. Great. Council President.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, I did want to ask Mr. Anderson a follow up question if that's, if it's okay. Uh, Mr. Anderson, with regard to, uh, the sidewalks, uh, the slope, um, exiting, going down toward Warner. Uh, is that ADA or FHA compliant? Is that a steep slope? Is that able, are, are those that are wheelchair bound able to traverse that safely?
Uh, which, which area are you speaking of?
Um, the sidewalk exiting the community connecting with Warner.
Okay, so the, the, uh, sidewalk follows the slope of the road, which is permitted by ADA. When you get to the intersections, uh, the profile of the road levels out to one percent and you have crosswalks at, at that intersection that are compliant with ADA standards.
I, I am, I'm very satisfied with that answer. Thank you. I, I would like to, to, um, are you the proper person? I, I should have probably asked this yesterday. Um, have you incorporated any bio swells or rain gardens into your stormwater management onsite?
Uh, no, those are usually for smaller, uh, greater, smaller applications of green technology. So we have green technology, there's the, the forest pavement, small scale infiltration basins and so forth. So those are our mechanisms which are used for a little bit larger sized, uh, storm drainage systems.
Mr. Anderson. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I've got one other thing to throw out there. I'd like to build their, to consider this for, uh, next time. Uh, there will be a next time. We'll tell you about that in a minute. Um, this application has a lot of parking, a lot of people. And it, uh, we've had other projects do this, that after the, uh, project is thirty percent, uh, filled, the, uh, applicant will provide a jitney to the local bus station and train station, uh, in perpetuity. Depending on how many people are using it in their complex, make a lot of sense and it will save, uh, cars. And we can work that, we can work the details out. So consider that. And to that end, uh, Mr. Plucker has asked for another meeting. And the meeting, this will be carried. There'll be no notice required. The two dates that we have now will be August fourteenth, uh, third, August thirteenth, a Tuesday, August fourteenth, a Wednesday. Six thirty PM start, eleven PM finish. And Mr. Afrin, you'll be able to ask your questions next time and then we'll go to the. I'm sorry?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a scheduling issue too on the fifteenth and fourteen. I can't join by Zoom.
Okay. Okay, we'll keep it here and leave it in town hall. Thank you.
It's been brought to my attention, I should have realized it myself, but it was brought to my attention on the thirteenth, that is a Jewish holiday, Tishavov. And so I know there's some people observing, um, it is a day of study and fasting, so I think the board should be alert to that. And, and it's in its own discretion. I'm not sure what.
Can you come on the fourteenth?
I, yes, the fourteenth works.
Okay, so, uh, we can still have the, well, we can still have the meeting. And, um, Mr. Appel will be here on the fourteenth and you can watch on, uh, the, the.
So much myself I was concerned with. I know some people interested in this matter.
Uh, they can, they, it's all on video. It'll all be preserved on video. And they could watch on the link.
Yeah, the prob- the problem will be those who can't be here won't be able to ask questions.
I'm sorry?
Those who can't be here won't be able to ask questions. That's the.
I got that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll tell you, I, I'm unavailable both of those days even by Zoom.
We do have a quorum. It's August, it's. I've already got five.
I already got most passes to take August off.
Exactly. Mr. Mr. Plucker? Okay, we could do, we'll do the fourteenth, we'll do the fourteenth. Go ahead.
I was gonna suggest that we would make all, any professional who testified on the thirteenth available on the fourteenth. A test upon on the thirteenth, available on the fourteenth for any questions. Mr. Chair, can we? Can we?
We're gonna, we won't have it on the thirteenth. We'll have it on the fourteenth. This way we'll pass Tishavov and you will be able to hear and participate and we will have to come up with more dates.
Mr. Chair, you're very much, Mr. Chair. Well, before we go any further, uh.
For the record, for the record, we're going to have the next special meeting on August fourteenth, starting at six thirty. And it will go till eleven o'clock. Uh, the meeting is carried. There will be no additional notice provided. And it will be available on Zoom on the fourteenth. The next regular planning board in person here. It will be in person and available on Zoom as it is now. The next regular planning board meeting will be August seventh at seven thirty PM via Zoom. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Uh, second.
Mr. Godozza, seconds. On the motion, all in favor?
Hi.
Guys are above the nose. Thank you very much.